All right, I'm gonna call this March 9th, 2021, meeting of the Fairfield Town Plan and Zoning Commission to Order. I'm Vice Chair Lenny Bremen, sitting in for Chair Matt Wagner, who will be a few minutes late. And we have Fred up, sitting in as an alternate. The first order of business is the minutes from February 9th and February 23rd, 2021. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Braun, so I'll move. Second, Commissioner Noonan. Commissioner Braun, any comments? Sorry, you're on mute.
No comments.
Commissioner Noonan, I think there was, there was one issue that I raised with Mr. Went. That was like a typographical issue. I think that's been cleared up. So can we vote approval on approval of the minutes from February 9th and February 21? All in favor of approval? Say aye or raise your hand. Right, the minutes are approved. Next order of business is the coastal site plan application for 1773 Fairfield Beach Road. Mr. Went?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is a coastal site plan application to construct a single-family dwelling at 1773 Post Road. That was a dwelling on this lot which was demolished in 2007. The house that's proposed meets the Beach District criteria in all respects with regard to setbacks and other design criteria. This matter, you do have the staff report in your Agenda Packet. It was also reviewed by the Connecticut DEEP. In their review indicates no concerns. That is our opinion. It's in consistent with all the relevant coastal management policies, and we recommend its approval.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Went. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Noonan, thank you. The second, Commissioner Francis. Commissioner Noonan, would you like to make any comments about the application?
Nothing aside from the staff recommends it and it complies with our regulations.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Francis?
Yes, I agree.
Thank you. And I did review the materials in the record, and I see that it was compliant with the Coastal Area Management Act, according to staff, according to the applicant's expert, and that the Connecticut State DEEP had no comments. So with that, should we vote on this application? If you could raise your hand or say, or say aye to vote your approval of the application? Very good. Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, seeing, seeing no opposed and no abstentions, the application is approved unanimously. The next order of business, we have something new for this commission, which is a pre-application review conducted pursuant to General Statute 7-159B. So I wanted to thank, first of all, staff, Mr. Went and Ms. Harrigan for introducing and for devising the procedures for this, this new process that we have. And for the public and those listening in, this is a procedure for the benefit of the applicant and also for the commission to be able to see an application for zoning approval before the filing of a formal application and for us to be able to give feedback and comments to the applicant, that the applicant might then use in crafting a formal application. The idea is to save time and resources of the commission and the applicant as well. And this is a procedure that's authorized by the state statutes, and it's been used successfully in other towns, including Westport. So this is gonna be a new experience for all of us, and we will see, see how it works. Our first pre-application review is for 730-750 Commerce Drive. And I do remind the applicant and the commission, the public, that this pre-application review process is not binding on the applicant, and it's not binding on us as a commission. So with that, Mr. Went, do you have any further comments on the, on the pre-application review?
I do not, other than what you have already said, Mr. Chairman. Just a reminder that, again, the public can certainly, is certainly here on this call, but we will not be taking public comment on the pre-application portion when, when and if an application does come to fruition, obviously, then we'd have a more engaged process for the public. This is just strictly a commission review, non-binding review with the applicant at this point. And to present this application is Attorney Fitzpatrick.
Very good. Attorney Fitzpatrick, take it away.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Bill Fitzpatrick. I'm an attorney in Fairfield with the law of Muffett's Patrick, Trey and Bologna. I'm here this evening representing Scala Partners and Abbey Road Advisors. We appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this first pre-application process. The purpose of this pre-app is to give the commission an idea of what the applicant is looking to propose and obtain feedback from the commission, recognizing it's not binding on either party. The applicant wants to avoid the preparation of a formal application with drawings, reports, et cetera, for a plan that the commission does not have a positive reaction to, and to avoid the expenditure of time for the commission to conduct a public hearing on a matter with no prospects of approval. The applicant does want to encourage the commission to make any and all comments and ask any questions. This is an informal proceeding. There's no drainage report. There's no traffic report. This is rather an opportunity for the applicant to give you a big picture look at this proposal and then discuss it with you. With me is, on the call is Ari Kudavides. Ari was a part of the Trademark I ownership team at 665 Commerce Drive, as well as the Trademark II ownership for the ongoing project of 1401 King's Highway, and is a part of the Trademark III projected ownership as well. My clients are looking to construct two buildings on the proposed 730 and 750 Commerce Drive and 770 Commerce Drive parcels. My clients are the owners of the property at 730-750 Commerce and are in discussions with the owner of 770 Commerce, Peter Penzer. My clients are proposing to construct two buildings. Buildings will be attached by a sky bridge, if you will. The building fronting on King's Highway will include retail on the first floor, including a fitness amenity space. The second floor is proposed to be space open to below. Third through fifth floors are apartments. Top floor contains apartments and amenity space. The second building, fronting on Commerce, is proposed to have parking on the first level and apartments on the second through fifth floors above. The rooftop will contain individual rooftop patios. Conceptually, the two buildings are planned to include 82 apartments. My clients are looking to construct essentially a continuation of the Trademark I and Trademark II projects, which is a mixed-use TOD proposal. The same quality of architecture and materials would be utilized. I should note that the Trademark III proposal has a residential overage, for lack of a better term. Similarly, the Trademark II project directly across the street has a commercial overage. The applicant is looking to combine the two parcels for the purpose of addressing the 70-30 residential-commercial ratio. The two, the two projects combined will likely satisfy the maximum residential density of 70%. In addition, Trademark II has a parking overage, and the applicant is looking to do a combined parking analysis for Trademark II and Trademark III to satisfy the required parking for the new proposal. End result is that the P and Z will have the mix that it desires in terms of a maximum of 70% residential, but it would be spread over two properties rather than one. Similarly, the parking for the combined parcels is fully adequate and satisfies the regs. It's just spread over two parcels. This is a similar concept to the Transportation Commercial Park, the Metro Center parcel, where the regs permit the calculation of coverage and floor area over the combined parcels as a whole. The other components that we would look to incorporate into the Trademark III project is the maximum height of 70 feet and a residential density of 75 units per acre, both as proposed by the Goody Clancy study and adopted by the commission. In sum, we think it's a good project. We think it's an attractive design. It's the same parties that did Trademark I and Trademark II, which are by any mark successful projects that have added considerably to the town of Fairfield tax base. And it's the same team that would be constructing Trademark III if approved. As I've said in the past, it's a rare opportunity for the commission to actually see the same applicants again and have a concrete demonstration of the kind of quality of construction that the applicants have put together and will put together in the future. At this point, I'd like to ask the commission for its reaction. Mr. Kudavides can give the commission a much better idea than I in terms of their success in leasing to certain types of tenants, if the commission is interested in that. I think it's pretty obvious that the residential component is necessarily the initial part of a TOD area, and the commercial is very locked in to come in the absence of existing residential. At this point, Mr. Kudavides and I would be happy to answer any questions, and we look forward to the commission's reaction to this conceptual proposal.
Very good. Thank you, Attorney Fitzpatrick. So now we come to the real meat of the pre-application processes, which is where you get to hear commissioners' initial reactions to what you're proposing in concept. In Westport, there's a tradition of just going around member by member, and I will save my comments for the end. But just in order of how you appear on my screen, if I could ask Commissioner Noonan whether you have initial reactions and questions to the applicant's proposal?
Yes, please. Thank you. Attorney Fitzpatrick, as I understand it, the application that you intend, if you were to go forward, would comply with the applicable regulations in the zone, correct?
Well, we would look to amend the zone in basically three different respects, Commissioner. Number one, increase the residential density to 75 bedrooms per acre, as Goody Clancy recommends. Number two, increase the height to 70 feet, as Goody Clancy recommends. And number three, I'm looking to combine the 1401 King's Highway and this property, which is across the street, for the purposes of calculating the 70-30 commercial residential ratio and for the purpose of parking. That's a change. So three changes.
And that parking analysis, would that require some amendments to our regulation, or are you taking advantage of a certain regulation?
No, because I would propose to amend the regs to permit the utilization in the TOD of property with a, a, some common ownership entity for the purposes of calculating the residential-commercial ratio and for the purpose of calculating parking. I mean, the parking is there. It's just that some of it will be across the street, and the commercial is there and the residential is there. They're just spread over two pieces instead of one.
Which leads me to my next question. It would have to cross the street. Would you be planning on going to the police department or whatever the applicable agency to seek a crosswalk or something like that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Now, the Goody, Goody Clancy, that was the consultants we had brought in, what, last year?
For the TOD, yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a little refresh my recollection. Thank you. I have nothing else.
Very good. Commissioner Braun?
Hi, Bill. I'm trying to visualize exactly where this is. I'm looking at an aerial. So Trademark I is the one on the corner of Black Park Turnpike and Commerce Drive, on the suburb of Commerce Drive, it's L-shaped. Where is Trademark II? Is that directly across where OSG is? Sort of kitty corner over there?
Trademark II is on the same side of the street as Trademark I and goes right to the railroad station. It's what's under construction today.
The second, if I may, Jim Went, for the record, the, the second project was a combination of parcels that included existing commercial buildings at 777 Commerce, 1375 King's Highway, in the new building that's being constructed, known as 1401 King's Highway, which is the large, you know, mixed-use, 160-unit building and parking structure immediately adjacent to the train station.
So the parking lot of Trademark I sort of connects to Trademark II in a way?
Yeah, actually, it's, they are both, yes.
And across the street where 730 is, is that right next to Rio Bravo?
Actually, Rio Bravo was part of it, and it's the building to the east of Rio Bravo as well.
So you're combining the Rio Bravo building, and there's some building next to it?
Correct.
Like the new building?
It's, that's the location.
Is there any, and you were gonna have an aerial walkway between, like across Commerce Drive?
No, there's gonna be a sky bridge, if you will, connecting the two proposed buildings, so that you can, you can walk one to the other.
Okay, so there will be two buildings. So the new building, the Rio Bravo and the 730, that's the new building, and it's two buildings, and there'll be a walkway between them, not across Commerce Drive?
Let me, let me be precise. Rio Bravo would come down. The existing building at 730 would come down. Two new buildings would be constructed, and they'd be connected, I believe it's on the second floor, by a sky bridge.
Is any component of this, obviously 10% would have to be affordable in that district, right?
Correct.
Any more than 10% of four units?
The, the plan that we had at the moment was 11%.
I would like to see that bumped up. That's my opinion. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. You're on mute, Lenny, sorry. Very good. Commissioner Gordon?
I just agree with the parking situation being across the street, so I'd be interested to see how they, you know, make that safe to go back and forth.
Thank you.
Commissioner Francis?
Yeah, I am. I'm concerned about the parking across the street not having it all on the site. And I think our, our latest regulation is 12% of affordable housing, that we did bump it up. And Goody Clancy, we, we did not adopt those recommendations. We accepted the report. How does this affect the little, is it Bright Horizons daycare?
It doesn't.
Do they, do they, those children play outside?
I don't know the answer to that. That's a separate property to the east.
But isn't it adjoining them?
It, it.
I'm just wondering about the five-story building in the shadow and how that affects them. Have you talked to them at all about that?
Well, it's too premature for that conversation. We certainly will.
Okay. Well, I don't know. Perhaps making the building a little lower or a little smaller would require a little less parking, a little less shadow on the daycare center or out and out. And 75 bedrooms per acre is a lot for us. I mean, it sounds like an attractive building, which all those are. I guess that's about my comments for now.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. But you went to mute again there, Mr. Bremen. Commissioner Braun, you had follow-up?
Yeah, I need another bite at the apple. Can, can, can Jim Went sort of compare the three aspects that Attorney Fitzpatrick wants to change from what we have to what we have? Like, just do the quick comparison of what's proposed and what is allowed now? Height, coverage, density, I guess?
Yeah, with respect to density, the existing reg permits 50 bedrooms per acre. The TOD study made some recommendations about potentially considering a higher density, which is what the applicant is considering here at 75 units. Our height is pretty close to 70 feet now as it is, but it's, there's a provision about measuring to, so I, the change from, I think it's, I'd have to look it up, but it's not, that's not a significant change. The biggest, the biggest design element change here that's being proposed is the concept of sharing design elements over multiple parcels. If you recall, the Metro Center project is similarly configured in that there's a road that runs through it, so there's multiple parcels. You have the parcel that's on the parking lot side. And the other side, and, and that regulation specifically allows the commission to spread the design elements across multiple parcels if it's a, if it's considered to be a unified development. So that's really the bigger picture here that they're looking for, is the opportunity to have shared parking across multiple properties and allow the design requirements for the terms of the percentage of residential occupancy versus commercial occupancy also shared across the broader, looking at the, the development holistically rather than as individual parcels.
Attorney Fitzpatrick, did you say part of one of these two buildings would be commercial below, residential above?
Yes.
And so is parking being proposed adequate according to our regs to satisfy both requirements? Are you sharing it, you know, between day and night and that type of thing?
The, the parking, by my calculation, is about nine spaces short. And what we're looking in the, the parking on Trademark II, which has the parking garage on the, on that property, we've got about 50 extra spaces there. So the point, point was, and recognizing that commercial and residential generally don't have a parking demand at the same time, we're looking to calculate the parking on the, on both, including Trademark II and Trademark III. But literally on Trademark III alone, my calculation, we are eight or nine spaces short. That's why we're looking for the reg, for the change.
Do you expect it to be commuters, like people who don't have as many cars because it's near the train station?
Well, I think that's part of it, but also if there's a retail, they usually close at five, and people are coming home to the residential at five. It's a rather optimum use, optimal use of the property, of the parking.
Thank you.
Commissioner Corcoran? There's need to unmute.
Did you call my name?
Yeah. Do you have comments on the pre-application?
I do. So I was wondering if, is this residential greater than 70% on this building?
On the Trademark III property alone?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the Trademark II is?
Is over on commercial.
Okay. Is the building actually higher at Trademark III than Trademark I and II?
I don't think so, Mr. Corcoran. I don't think so. I think it's gonna be very similar to Trademark II.
That's all I have.
Very good. Commissioner Levy?
Thank you. Attorney Fitzpatrick, as I understand it, you're basically seeking to allocate or apportion the commercial and the residential as between the two projects, two buildings, similar to what we did on Bronson Road. Is that correct? Where we had two buildings and allocated part of it as commercial and the other is residential?
Commissioner, I'm not familiar with Bronson, but what I'm looking to do is to do a, when you do your commercial residential analysis, I want to be analyzing the properties on both sides of the street, yes.
Okay. And I see on the building on the corner of Commerce and King's Highway, it's open, or the second floor is open to the ground level. What's contemplated on the ground level there, like an open space or an entryway?
That, that's going, well, the, the building facing King's Highway will have retail, a fitness use for the residential, and another commercial use on the lower level with the high ceilings. Does that answer your question?
And would that be on the, yeah, would that be on the King's Highway side of it?
It's on the King's Highway side, yes.
Right. Is there any, is there any possibility of also having some commercial on the Commerce Drive side?
Mr. Kudavides could perhaps address that, but the fact of the matter is we found it very difficult to address. There's a change in grade such that it made sense for us to put parking below. And when you put parking below, it makes much more sense to have a few steps up to residential than having steps up to commercial. And quite frankly, we've seen a significantly stronger demand for residential than the commercial.
Yeah, but once you build it, maybe the commercial will come, so.
Oh, that's, that's the idea, quite frankly.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Fitzpatrick, or maybe Mr. Kudavides could address my first comment, either of you. Are there types or categories of retail that you're envisioning or targeting for the, for the ground floors?
Let me see if Mr. Kudavides can unmute himself.
Yes, this is, for the record, Ari Kudavides. The types of retail, I think, will be consistent with what exists today in the neighborhood, which is what I'll designate as neighborhood retail. It will not be big box in nature. The largest space that will, that is designed for this new project is about 3,400 square feet. So the, the spaces will range anywhere from, call it 2,000 square feet to up to 3,500 square feet in, in a couple storefronts.
Very good. And is there, what are you seeing in terms of the demand for different types of retail, rental, and also for residential? And, and are there, you know, feasibility studies that have been done or that are contemplated in terms of the demand for the residential units or the, you know, the market for particular retail to take advantage of what you would offer?
As far as commercial or retail, it's been somewhat hit or, hit or miss. Obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty in the market, especially for retailers and the use of that space. So, you know, our long-term vision, and I think which has been consistent with the town's master plan and vision for this neighborhood, is to continue to build it out as a, as a neighborhood retail destination area where the retail can kind of, retailers that all occupy, any of the buildings in the neighborhood can kind of support each other, as retailers tend to do more, I guess, are more successful in a neighborhood retail setting. And so, but right now, that is a little bit challenging, given COVID and COVID restrictions. So it really just depends. You know, we've seen, obviously, food uses and medical uses as probably the most consistent types of tenants looking for space. But it, it really will just depend on, you know, the timing of when the building is delivered and how the market is at that, that moment in time. So.
Right, sorry.
No, I was gonna say, any questions on retail before I move on to the residential?
Uh, no, please.
As far as residential goes, I will say that As far as residential goes, I will say that most of our demand is driven by local residents who are in need of transition housing. And what I mean by that is most of them have either lived in the area previously and are coming back, but can't find a home to purchase, or maybe not sure if they're ready to purchase a home. Or there are people that live in the market today typically in a home, as most housing in Fairfield is, is a single-family residential, but don't have a desire to leave the town in any great way, but maybe their housing situation is changing. It's typically tied to life events. You know, a spouse may, may fall ill or pass away, divorces happen, or people are just changing jobs. So there's a lot of different drivers, but it's typically largely demand from within the market. We also do get some subset of university housing-related, you know, people or drivers, mostly employees, but sometimes graduate students. And then we will also get people that are, that Fairfield is well-located for professionals that maybe have professional couples that one way may work in New Haven while the other works in New York City or Stanford, and this is kind of the middle ground for them. So it allows them to have a better commute. So that's what we get most of our outside-the-market demand.
Very good. Thank, thank you very much. Just in the interest of getting some more participation, Commissioner Di Giacomo?
Yes.
You have comments?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. And Commissioner Elliott?
Well, this was kind of going off on the residence. Is there, right, just asking, Mr. Kudavides, what's the makeup of any college or children? What's, you know, what is that typically, what's the, what's the ratio now at Trademark One and Two? And what do you anticipate would be the makeup for this?
I don't have the statistics in front of me, but most, because this type of housing is typically transitional, it, most of the time, it, it does not really impact, or we don't have a ton of school-aged children, each children living in the buildings. So a lot of times, it may be a younger couple that have just started their family or are thinking about starting a family, haven't moved to a home or a single-family home yet, or maybe have one child that's younger. And so they're in that transition period between, you know, buying a house and renting. But more typical, it's actually people downsizing, people that, whose children have already gone through the school system, they're older, and they don't want to have the burden of maintaining their home or yards. And so they're looking to, to move on from that and simplify their life. Some of them may be slightly pre-retirement, and so they may be thinking of buying another home, a retirement home somewhere else in the country, and this allows them to maintain a residence in the town and, and their connections to friends and family locally. The only other category is divorced families, and typically, in that circumstance, there may be children, school-aged children involved, but they're, they're already attending the school system in Fairfield, and this is really one parent or the other moving out of the household and may be, I guess, housing their children on a split basis. So it has less impact to the children's life if they have to take the bus, say, from another location in Fairfield versus their, you know, their, their other residents.
If I might jump in for a second, Peter Jim Went. The, our last data for, for the 2019 enrollment data shows five students in Trademark One. We don't have data yet for the second development. But as Ari just said, we're not sure if those are primary addresses or secondary addresses, but out of 100, you know, 101 units showing five students in that first development. So not, not a significant number.
And I'd like to welcome Chairman Wagner to the meeting. Chairman Wagner, we were just wrapping up our pre-application review for 7:30 Commerce Drive. If, I, I know Commissioner Gordon had, had one last comment. Excuse me, Commissioner Braun.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Commissioner, please continue.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I might have just spaced this out because I was looking something up. Did you mention, or did somebody ask, or I'm asking now if they didn't, what percentage of Trademark One and Trademark Two, or Trademark Two is not built yet, but what percentage of Trademark One is fully rented out right now? And what are the average rents for, say, like a two-bedroom unit that's not considered affordable? If you know, I mean, ballpark.
Well, Trademark, Trademark One is typically between 95 and 98% occupied. And average two-bedroom rent is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,300 a month.
And the affordable is probably like 1,500 or something? I'm just trying to remember what the rules are.
Something like that. It's about half.
Yeah. Trademark Two, you anticipate that being the same occupancy? It's just surprising to me. I had no idea there was so much interest in paying such a high rent.
Yeah, for rental, I mean, relative to what you can rent in Fairfield, those are actually very affordable. Single-family homes are much more expensive. And so, you know, for, it's, you know, for the housing that we provide, these options, it's, it's a pretty big relative value.
And so Trademark Two is going up. Do you know, they don't get advanced leases or anything like that, right?
Well, Trademark Two has been, has been, is TCO'd, and we are occupying the building, and we're currently about 50% leased to date. And we opened the first phase of that building at the end of October. So there's pretty, you know, significant demand for that, for that housing.
So Trademark Three now, the one that's going to be two buildings where Rio Bravo is and then the commercial building next to it, I'm very interested in some kind of greenscaping or making it, what's it, L E E D, you know, environmentally friendly construction? Is there any goal of putting that in? It might make it more expensive, but then I read that, you know, people are interested in that if they're gonna pay the high rent anyway?
Yeah, typically speaking, I mean, where regulations are, building codes for the state of Connecticut, et cetera, I mean, we essentially, all of our, all of our lighting, design work, and heating, air conditioning systems are all state-of-the-art. They're all, I mean, very efficient and, and essentially, you know, designed to the highest standards today. To get to lead certified-type stuff, typically you go above and beyond that where you're, you're doing some sort of supplemental, you know, type energy generation, solar, et cetera. We, we typically don't design buildings in that same way. We will have a good amount of recreational space, both at the rooftop level and, and obviously at grade where we're going to be building some, some nice landscaping features and, and outdoor plantings. If you've been to the existing buildings, you know, they, the streetscapes are pretty attractive with plantings and hardscapes and trees. So we anticipate that that would be consistent with what we've done with the other two projects.
Very, very good, Mr. Kudavides. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Braun. I think we should get moving on to the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. But Chairman Wagner, did you have any comments based on the written materials? I know you weren't here for the, the oral presentation.
Thanks very much for, for asking, but, you know, I, I reviewed the materials and, but I wasn't here for the conversation, so I, I wouldn't want to ask things that have already been discussed. I'll listen to the tapes and, and I can get myself up to speed. But apologies for having a, an emergency conflict with, with the meeting tonight. And thank you.
Not at all.
Take it over.
Of course. I did want to add that, I did want to add my voice to those other commissioners who said that it would be good to see a proposal for below-market rate housing of a greater percentage than 11. I know that we did recently approve to exchange last year, and that is consistent with Goody Clancy's recommendations. That's all I had. And with that, I think this was, I can, I can speak for a commission, I, I hope, in saying that this was a productive pre-application review.
Thank you very much.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner Berman, for leading the meeting. And again, apologies for my, my being late. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. I'll call it two items together that were related, continued from February 9 and February 23. Zoning Regulation Amendment, Application of Fairfield Medical LLC Proposing New Section 12.4.29 Inclusionary Multifamily Residential Use, the Housing Opportunity or Workforce Housing Component, and 4185 Black Rock Turnpike Zoning Compliance Application of Fairfield Medical LLC Pertaining to a 94-Unit Residential Development Pursuant to Section 830G of the Connecticut General Statutes. So when we, we last left off, we had Attorney Green, on behalf of the Merritt Conservancy, was, was finishing his presentation. We had a request for the sightlines materials to be filed, which they have been. Attorney Green will resume the podium and complete his presentation. I will then ask if anyone else, members of the public, want to be heard. And if you do, you can use the chat box to sign up. We'll call you in order. If we get to the end of the list, I'll make another announcement for public comment. Once we're finished with that, I will turn it back over to the applicant for their rebuttal. And then after the applicant's finished with their rebuttal, the public hearing on this item will be closed. Okay? So with that, Attorney Green, I will pass the microphone over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. Once again, my name is Joel Green. I appear before you this evening on behalf of the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, who, once again, its mission is to preserve and enhance the historic Merritt Parkway through education, advocacy, and partnership. So when we adjourned the last hearing, I was asking some questions regarding the, the sightline analysis. And in response to my questioning, I note that a sightline profile was provided by the applicant. I just noticed before the hearing that it was not posted on the website. I don't know whether the members of the commission had an opportunity to see it or not.
Yes, we, we do have it, and all those materials have been collated and now brought into the, the commission's website.
I'd be happy to call it up on the screen if it will.
You can feel free if you like, or I'm sure that Ms. Harrigan can drive if you, if you would prefer. Either way.
It would be great if Ms. Harrigan could call it up.
Okay. Do you have that?
Give me just one more.
Okay. Thank you.
And while that material is being posted, I do have some questions for Mr. Sullivan. And through you, Mr. Chair, with your permission, I'd like to resume asking Mr. Sullivan some questions about the sightline issue.
Very well. Thank you. Do we have Mr. Sullivan?
I see he's in the room.
Evening, yesterday Sullivan, SLR.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
So while, while we're waiting for that, and while we're waiting for that exhibit to come up, Mr. Sullivan, I note in your report, and referring to page two of your report, and it's dated November 3, 2020, and on the second page, you deal with intersection site distance. And can you just let the commission, or explain to the commission what the methodology was in, that you used in developing, in reaching your conclusion that the sightline was adequate in both directions?
Sure. Let me just see what you're referring to. The, nothing unusual in the language, but the process for evaluating sightlines is, I guess I'll, I'll start at the beginning. A sightline, intersection sightline, is the visibility of a driver exiting the driveway at a height, an assumed eye height of three and a half feet, looking in either direction and seeing an object three and a half feet off the ground. We do this in several ways. We do it initially with field verification. We do it with mapping. We had some mapping which was available to us, particularly the site plan that had some, some topography to it. And what we're looking for is a distance that's provided to us by Connecticut Department of Transportation, and it's based on the 85th percentile speeds. In this particular case, we found the 85th percentile speed by placing equipment on Black Rock Turnpike, which determined what those speeds are. In this particular case, they were about 43 miles an hour in each direction, which requires 480 feet of visibility for a driver sitting in the driveway at three and a half feet, looking either left or right at an object three and a half feet high.
Now, what were the, you said you made reference to site plans. Can you just tell the commission, are those the site plans that are contained in the application that was submitted at the time?
Oh, I'm not sure, because this was done while the site plan, we typically, when we're hired, we have the preliminary site plan, and typically it goes through some work, but the elevation of the driveway has, has been consistent throughout the, the site plans we've looked at. As a matter of fact, it's the same driveway location as the prior application.
So am I correct that the site plan and profile that I note is dated February 26, that's up on the screen, is that the first sightline profile that was prepared?
No, it's the first, the one that was cadded and submitted.
Cadded, I'm sorry. I don't know what that means.
That means it was put on a, a plan with a title block for, for submission.
So you're saying other sightline profile drawings were prepared before this one?
There, there, I'm not sure if one was fully done. I know I did see one that was part of the prior application that I used as a, a early on reference.
And that was prepared by Mr. Galante, is that correct?
I don't know.
And, and do you know, I note that in your report, you don't identify, for example, that there's any need for any sightline easements of any kind. I don't see that in your report. So you concluded, you concluded that no easement was necessary. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, do you know who owns the property over which the northbound sightline passes?
I do not. I know that it's, no, I do not know the ownership. I'm assuming it's the same ownership as this parcel.
But do you know who it is?
I do not know the name of the, the entity, no.
And can you tell the commission what a sightline easement is?
It's, a sightline easement is a, a document where a property owner adjacent, or not always adjacent, but a property owner where a sightline is aerially passing over their property agrees not to put plantings or objects to obstruct the sightline in the future.
And that's like, you know, fences and that kind of thing, signage, walls, and all that kind of thing that are above the three and a half foot distance from which you measure the height, correct?
Typically.
And so in this case, you're aware that the sightline apparently travels over property of an abutting neighbor, is that correct?
Well, my understanding, my understanding is that the, the ability to do any clearing or sightline or landscaping, whatever's required through there, it's, there is an agreement to do that, is my understanding.
But you didn't note that in your report?
I did not.
Okay. I have no further questions. I don't know if the commission, through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if the commission has questions at this juncture.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Sullivan? Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I had a question.
No, Commissioner Brown.
Who is the owner of the abutting property that we're talking about? Is that the one that's up Black Rock Turnpike, up the hill north?
So what I'm referring to is that you'll see a dimensional line right above the U and R in Turnpike. You'll see what is a vertical line on your screen that does a right angle there. That peninsula of property is not in the title of the applicant in this case. So that square, that long rectangular strip of property is not owned by the applicant. And it's Merritt Parkway's position, for example, that the sightline that you see looking northward, so away from the Merritt Parkway, actually traverses private property. And that a sightline easement would have been required to be part of the record in this case. Otherwise, there's no, nothing in the record to satisfy the notion that there's an adequate sightline.
Can I ask Mr. Sullivan another question? The, the entryway right there, there's only one way in and out of this parts, of this development, and that's right where it's shown, between where the parking curves towards the Merritt, and then this other part that's between the, the building and like across from the Hi-Ho, I guess. That whole rectangle between like the entryway going to the right up the hill, that's all owned by somebody else, between the road and the building? But is that the only entry and exit way for this whole development right there? And also, where is that in relation to the Hi-Ho or the restaurant across the street? Is that across from that or set away from it? What's across the street from that? Where, where's the entryway to the facility across the street?
Two things. One, one, it's directly across the driveway across the street, first. And secondly, I think later in our presentation, our site engineer will be able to talk a little bit more about easements and rights over the adjacent property, which should be helpful for the commission. But yes, it's a single driveway, and it's located opposite the driveway to Hi-Ho.
Don't do, so the easement's not on the land records now? That would be something you'd be seeking to work out at some point?
Certainly, if it's not on the land records, and it's a different ownership entity, there should be an easement.
Thank you.
And DOT, DOT would certainly be sure that that's the case.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Chris Smith for the record, members of the commission. Mr. Spath will address that he did all the work and can certainly address the fact that there is an easement and when he's doing his presentation for the rebuttal.
Very good, thank you.
I would just comment that I, I understand the applicant will present on that, but I would just note for the commission's benefit that it is not part of the application at any, in any place at this point, and is not included in any of the documents, so.
Wait, wait, I think you're, you've made that point clear, and Mr. Sullivan has punted on the, the easement, and Attorney Smith has suggested that there will be more information forthcoming.
Fair enough. Fair enough. I guess I would also, well, I'll get to it. So I submitted some materials to the commission that are, I know, on the website, and I'd be happy to just go through them briefly if I can share my screen. I just need a moment. So I don't know if you're able to see my screen at this point.
Yeah. Now we are.
Perfect. Okay.
There you go.
So I, just to provide some context on this application, I had gone to the site on a few occasions to, to really understand sort of the scope and for myself to understand the context of the application. So this first shot is a site of looking northbound on Black Rock Turnpike. This is just significant for the commission to note that there are, for example, there are no pedestrian amenities of any kind in this area. It's a high-volume area in terms of traffic, and that there's no sidewalks or anything under the bridge, under the parkway. This just shows traffic. Next is a southbound view from the Hi-Ho property that also highlights that and gives the commission some context in terms of the elevation. This was the area that was shown as a flooded area on materials which had been submitted previously to the commission. Again, a closer view of that. I'll, I'll try to move this along for the benefit of the commission. This is the subject property. You can see the steep slope, and what I was trying to really capture here is the amount of rock and the amount of ledge that's evident on the surface of the property. And you can see that it's a dramatic slope heading towards the south on the property and towards the Merritt Parkway ramp. Again, a similar view. And it's just difficult because a lot of brush. So this is from the corner of the southbound ramp onto the Merritt Parkway, and again, you can see the tremendous rise in the property. And again, I'm sorry, these photographs don't capture the amount of rock that's literally sticking out of the ground. You all may be familiar with it, but I just wanted to submit these into the record. Once again, I think you can see some of the rock outcroppings from, from this vantage point. And this is a view from the other side of the entrance ramp that shows the site. This is the southbound view along the highway. This is the northbound view that I talked about approximately at the location of the, where the driveway is. And these red flags that are shown in the foreground are all marked DOT. I don't know if they mark the, they mark the right-of-way. I'm not sure. Maybe Mr. Spath can speak to that. So this I just wanted to show the commission is the drainage area on the south side or west side of that southbound ramp. You'll see there's a, and Mr. Trinkus had made reference to the fact that there, that the stormwater is to be piped under the ramp and is discharged in this area. And the next photo shows the, there's a pond at the bottom of the, at the bottom of that area, and that's between the intersection of Black Rock and the southbound ramp onto the parkway, and presumably that overtopped in that flooding photo that you saw. This is actually a photo, and the significance of this photo is that most of the areas where this, there is no snow, you, a large rock outcroppings on the site. This was taken a few weeks ago, and you can see against the snow, the various areas where the ledge projects out of the property. So with that, I will yield the screen, and I can stop sharing. So once again, the photos that we submitted were designed to give some context, to show the ledge on the site, to show the drainage basin, the lack of pedestrian amenities, the lack of, again, of no sidewalks. There's no public transportation, as you heard at the last public hearing from members of the public. And unlike so many of the other applications that the commission has heard, there's a real lack of connectivity with respect to this application and this project. And really, the only access to this site is if you own a motor vehicle. And you heard a lot of discussions about the inadequacy of parking, and I will address that shortly. We have submitted some new elevations to the commission that show a redesigned building. And if I can go back to the screen share, I'll just highlight those briefly. So as you can see, and, and we've kind of had a, in terms of the terms that have been used internally with our team, the first drawing that we had produced, the alternative drawing, was sort of a re, we called it redistributed, redistributed mass and a relocated structure. This one is reduced mass and relocated structure. And as you can see, this is a structure that's lower, and this is the south elevation facing the parkway. And it has a recommended buffer. You can see a landscape buffer in the foreground by moving the structure, that fifteen feet, it affords an area between the parking area and the southbound ramp onto the parkway to create a tree buffer that at least creates some visual distraction from the parking structure underneath. You can see that the exterior treatment is one that is brick-faced, and that was something that was discussed in terms of as a preservation move to make it more consistent with the historic character of the parkway. And the other drawing is a view as this building would appear. It's got lower massing, and this is the view that would appear from a Black Rock Turnpike and from, for example, with the Hi-Ho to your back. And obviously, as you can see, it produces a much less obtrusive, in our view, a much more consistent structure. And then, I mean, these are alternatives for the commission to consider as it looks at this project. Now, obviously, these, these drawings help to address the visual impact and the significant impacts of the parkway. And once again, you know, there, there have been materials submitted to the commission. There's been a lot of discussion as to what you can see and what you can't see. Anyone who has driven on the Merritt Parkway knows that you can see the Hi-Ho. You've all seen the Hi-Ho from the Merritt Parkway. And, you know, I note that the applicant, and I'll address some of the materials that the applicant has submitted in terms of claiming that there's a landscape buffer or that it's visually blocked, but let's face it, you can see the Hi-Ho from the parkway. This building is significantly taller. This is a seventy-foot building that is being proposed. It is six times the size of the Hi-Ho in terms of its volume. I would suggest that this reduced mass structure also would help to address, it's something that the commission is willing to consider. It would address many of the parking issues that were expressed by neighboring residents at the last session of the public hearing. And once again, the exterior treatment is one that is far more consistent with the historic character of the parkway, which is so close by. Interestingly, the applicant really didn't offer anything in their initial presentation on historic character. The applicant didn't, really didn't address that at all. And I, I want to just address the, sort of the, some of the materials that the applicant submitted this week. First of all, as we had noted, and as Mr. Haynes had noted when we appeared before the commission two weeks ago, the Merritt Parkway is thirty-seven and a half miles long. It's interesting to me how, you know, there were instances of intrusions in areas that you could see from the parkway produced by the applicant, and yet there's so few for a thirty-seven and a half mile long highway. I had an opportunity to drive a long distance on the parkway this past weekend, and it truly is park-like, and I, I hope you all recognize that. The applicant came up with a limited number of instances in which the historic viewscape was breached, and I want to talk about it briefly. And I'll move this along, and I, I understand that the commission has a lot of this information. You've seen a lot of it, so I'll, I will move along quickly, but I, I think in fairness, I should address the following. The applicant, for example, points out the property where Sikorsky is located. We're all familiar with it, adjacent to the, on the banks of the Houstonic River. Well, the first thing that, one might- of the Parkway, which is so close by. Interestingly, the applicant really didn't offer anything in their initial presentation on historic character. The applicant didn't, really didn't address that at all. And I, I want to just address the, sort of the, some of the materials that the applicant submitted this week. First of all, as we had noted, and as Mr. Haynes had noted when we appeared before the commission two weeks ago, the Merritt Parkway is 37 and a half miles long. It's interesting to me how, you know, there were instances of intrusions in areas that you could see from the Parkway produced by the applicant. And yet, there's so few for a 37 and a half mile long highway. I had an opportunity to drive a long distance on the Parkway this past weekend, and it truly is park-like. And I, I hope you all recognize that. The applicant came up with a limited number of instances in which the historic viewscape was breached, and I want to talk about it briefly. And I'll move this along, and I, I understand that the commission has a lot of this information. You've seen a lot of it, so I'll, I will move along quickly. But I, I think in fairness, I should address the following. The applicant, for example, points out the property where Sikorsky is located. We're all familiar with it, adjacent to the, on the banks of the Houston River. Well, the first thing that one must recognize is that Sikorsky was built before the Parkway. That site was in use as an, as a helicopter plant before the Parkway existed. In addition, that presents visual challenges that certainly we can't deal with. We have a, a river there, and obviously, the river's at the bottom of a long hill. So you can see that, and there's little that we can do about that. Another issue that we've dealt with, or my client has dealt with extensively, is are these highway interchanges? And we're talking about the Route 7 interchange and the Route 825 interchange. The applicant goes to great lengths to show photographs of the buildings and sort of show how those, I'm sorry, was there a comment? In any, in any event, highway interchanges are, first of all, difficult to screen. And I think for the benefit of the commission, you should first understand that the history involved is such that the administration of the Parkway and oversight of the Parkway was something that had been handled historically by an earlier organization. That was the, it was an oversight commission that oversaw the Parkway, but it was abandoned at the time that the county system of government was abandoned. And what had happened is there was actually a lapse in the oversight of the Parkway. And the Route 825 interchange was actually planned in the 60s or 70s and was constructed in the 70s. And similarly, Route 7 was something that was planned later on. And interestingly, the applicant submits materials talking about the Merritt Parkway Advisory Committee. And that was actually formed, and the applicant in its materials actually describes the formation of that. And that was formed in response to a preservation effort that was spurred by these interchanges. And it's actually set forth on page eight of the supplemental materials submitted by the applicant. And there's a very good description of the fact that recognizing that these were intrusions into the historic character of the Parkway, the Commissioner of Transportation formed an advisory committee. And in fact, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy is the advisory component of that committee. So that should be noted. Another fact that the commission should understand is that actually the right-of-way of the, we all see the paved portion of the Parkway. They're actually, generally speaking, the southern boundary of the right-of-way for the Merritt Parkway is over 250 feet in depth generally on the south side of the Parkway. And on the north side of the Parkway, the right-of-way is only about 50 feet generally from the Parkway. So the, the actual land on the sides of the highway generally along its length are 250 feet or more on the south and 50 feet or more on the north. And Mr. Haynes had explained to me that the reason that was done is because originally, when it was designed, the possibility of creating a parallel Parkway to the Merritt Parkway was explored. And so the right-of-way was left in a very wide configuration. Obviously, the economics of that after the 30s project, I'm sorry, after the project did not make that a, a reality. And I would also note that the right-of-way becomes narrower and trumpl in certain areas, so it's not necessarily uniform. So here we are, and the applicant points to other properties. And honestly, in almost all of the instances that the applicant points out, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy is working on it. And what, what I mean by that is, for example, there's a photo shown of the hockey rink that was just before this commission. And the drawing is obviously not the way the hockey rink will appear from the highway. And there is landscaping in the plan that this commission approved. But significantly, there are ongoing, there's an ongoing dialogue right now between the Merritt Parkway Conservancy and Sacred Heart. And Sacred Heart has indicated a willingness to create a landscape boundary to block that view from the Merritt Parkway. Similarly, the applicant refers to the YMCA in, in Westport and shows that. There's an ongoing initiative right now to create screening for that project so that you can't, so to block the view of it and once again, to preserve the historic character of the Parkway. And so you'll see something with that soon. And the fact of the matter is that we are always, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy is always looking to deal with these issues. There was a Glover Avenue development. There is an apartment building, a residential building that is close to the highway down at the Merritt 7 interchange. And honestly, the Merritt Parkway Conservancy opposed that application unsuccessfully. But I guess the answer is that is an example of why a project such as this is inappropriate and unacceptable and will impair the historic resource that is the Parkway. Most of the other buildings, they referenced the Marriott, for example, that's at an interchange. And I guess the point is that, that the very materials that the applicant submits, in this case, to show the intrusions into the viewscape from the Parkway are the very reasons why this application should be denied or modified by the commission. Engineering comments. I'll move on. First of all, as you can see, there was a response by the applicant. Mr. Trinkus did provide a, a response that is in the record. The thing that struck Mr. Trinkus and me is that the applicant did not modify its plans. And the applicant did not, for example, there's a reference to test borings. I note that a document was submitted. Mr. Went had circulated a document to Attorney Smith and to me with that dealt with blasting concerns. And obviously, this commission is aware of the amount of rock on the site. Interestingly, the engineer for the applicant makes reference in the response to a test bore or a test hole that was dug. And yet, the plans are not modified to show the commission, to show the public, and certainly my client, as to where that is. There are responses to comments, and yet, there's no data provided. The applicant did not update, modify, or plot any of the information that was provided or correct dimensional errors and that sort of thing. There is a reference in the engineering response that the engineering firm has a high level of familiarity with the, with the site. And yet, I note that there's no existing conditions plan that has been provided with this application. Ordinarily, the commission is provided with an existing conditions plan, a survey that enables the commission to understand the present configuration of the site. I did not see that. I, I may have missed it, but I did not see an existing conditions plan. I would submit that the application, as it is configured, does not meet your site plan requirements in terms of showing sort of some of the off-site features adjoining property owners and that sort of thing. So that would have been of assistance to this commission, particularly in understanding some of the flooding issues. I understand there are blasting concerns. Once again, I don't believe that the applicant has addressed the concerns that were discussed at the last session. There was a, a note by the engineer that, once again, this familiarity with the historic elevations of the site, that there's a lot of fill. And I think it's reasonable, based on the flooding concerns and the blasting concerns, that this commission note the concern that there is a lack of data as to the amount of actual fill on the site. An accurate survey that provides where ledge is, where, and, and what the actual composition of the two-acre site is in terms of filling and what is truly required in terms of blasting and site preparation, which hasn't been provided. You'll just give me a moment. I think that another thing is the exhibit submitted by the applicant that shows the landscaping and the alleged viewsapes from the Parkway fails to adequately address and plot, as in draw and show, for example, a rendering that would show what the true impact is of the proposed structure in terms of its height. We believe that even based on the drawings that the applicant submitted, that it's obvious that a 70-foot tall building will be visible above the treetops that are shown. It is once again, a massive building. You've heard significant testimony from Merritt Parkway Conservancy's consultants that it will impact the viewscape. It will adversely impact the historic resources. And I, you know, at the end of the day, this commission will act as the fact finder. And I'm not going to go into, and I know we've spent a time on a lot of 8-30G applications, and I've been before this commission on many of them. And I'm not going to go through, I'm not going to go through the law. I know that you are familiar with it. But I think the best summary, the best summary is that you are the, you are the finders of fact under Connecticut law. You hear the experts. You assess the testimony, you assess the exhibits. You've heard in this case, Mr. Trinkus address the significant concerns he has regarding the stormwater detention retention system and stormwater treatment. And his opinion that the system is inadequate. I would submit that the applicant really hasn't satisfied its burden in assuring you that the, that the flooding that we saw will not occur, that the system is adequate. Even on the second attempt, the applicant had an opportunity to update its data. I won't go through Mr. Trinkus's comments, but you did receive a rebuttal by Mr. Trinkus. And he correctly points out the number of ways in which the applicant failed to address the concerns that were raised. So once again, you are the finders of fact here. You assess the expert testimony, which I understand at times is you know, controversial and directly opposite. But you'll make those findings. I think that we have demonstrated the impact. I've submitted a memo to the commission. And once again, I won't go through the law at this moment, but it's all in the memo. I know you've all had an opportunity to read it several times since, and have read it several times since the last hearing. And it, again, highlights the importance of protecting substantial public interest in health, safety, and other matters. And other matters do include historic resources. We've demonstrated that the stormwater management is inadequate in this application. And on that basis, we would ask the commission, the Merritt Parkway Commission, first of all, thanks you for your generous patience in hearing me at the last hearing and hearing our consultants and hearing me this evening. But we would urge you to deny the application, or if the commission is not inclined to deny the application in view of the need for affordable housing, which we acknowledge. We hope that the commission will modify the application in a manner that will not adversely impact the historic resources. We have provided the commission with some examples of how to do that. We think that the plan that we submitted this evening, well, once again, we'd ask the commission to deny, deny the application. This is a modification that the commission might rightfully consider. I note that all of our consultants are present. If the commission has questions of Mr. Trinkus at this time, for example, he is available. I see he is joined. And I just, I want to thank you for your patience and for hearing us this evening. And once again, I'm available for questioning.
Yeah, thank you very much, Attorney Green. So I, I have a question for Mr. Trinkus. There was a reference in, in, in the rebuttal that over the course of the decades, there had been various feet of fill had been loaded onto the, onto the site. And in some places, 10 to 12 feet of, of fill. And that created this buffer that the criticism, that, that met the criticism, right? The criticism being that the drainage system don't be in bedrock and therefore, there is no capacity to, you know, for the groundwater to, to receive, you know, the, the, from, from the, from the mechanism, so the groundwater. And, and so the applicant comes back with a rebuttal and says, yeah, but what you don't know is that over the past 40, 50-plus years, there has been 10 or 12 feet of fill that's been dumped on this land. And in fact, it's, this drainage system is going to be, is going to be on top of the fill. So, Mr. Trinkus, wondering whether or not you saw that and whether that, well, you have any comment or response to?
Yes, for the record, Stephen Trinkus, I'm a licensed professional engineer from South Ferry. Having reviewed the plan, the topography provided by the applicant, applicant does not demonstrate that fill has been placed on the site. It looks more of a cut, particularly on the southern end of the system or the uphill end of the system. Even if fill is placed, the quality of the fill depends, is completely unknown. As Attorney Green pointed out, they claim there were borings done, but we have not seen a map or any results. And in their number two response, they talk that the pit done at the northern end of the system was 12 feet below grade at an elevation of 108. And, you know, if you, if you look at the, if the, if you look at the contour map by the applicant, the grade at the southern, at the northern end of the system, the existing grade shown is 120. There, 108 is actually down at the, about where the entrance ramp comes on the Black Rock Turnpike. So if they're saying that the, the test pit was done roughly at elevation 120, 12 foot down would give you 108. However, the bottom of the infiltration practice, as they're proposing, is 109.6, only one and a half feet above that refusal depth. It's not 4.6 feet. That, the DEP manual says a three-foot separation, so that doesn't work. On the southern end of the system, i.e. the, the uphill end, they talk of a pit 25 foot down. The elevation's up there, range between 120 and 130. So depending where that pit is, there's a whole different set of parameters. But again, just because you might, you might have fill here, which it doesn't appear to be, in my professional opinion, the quality of that fill, we have no idea what it is. I mean, if it's construction fill material, it may not be suitable. Furthermore, the applicant says they had a perk rate. It was an inch and 20. Well, a perk rate is done at the ground surface, generally 18 to 24 inches down. You're not 10 or 12 feet, 10 to 20 feet below grade. That's why you have to do an infiltration test at that point, because that's where the water is actually going. So the applicant's response does not answer the questions I raised at the prior hearing. And based on the current plans on file, the stormwater management system is likely in bedrock. It does not appear to be in fill. It does not appear to be in fill. I happened to drive by the site one day last week, and there, there's no evidence of fill if this, where this system is. There's evidence of perhaps a cut on the southern end where some more of that rock is exposed, but definitely not fill.
Mr. Chairman, may I just comment briefly? I, just briefly, I, my point with the lack of existing conditions map was also this. If 10 to 20 feet of fill were put on this site in the last 40 to 50 years, there would be an abundance of contour maps, there would have had to be an application to the zoning commission. You can't put that quantity of fill on a site in the town of Fairfield in this era and not, and not have had surveys with topographical surveys and show your filling activities. And that's my point. None of that was provided. And that data must be available if there were in fact filling activities with that kind of a dramatic amount of fill deposited on the site.
Right, okay. And, and so Mr. Trinkus, given the plans as you've reviewed them, I think it's your opinion that the, the drainage system will fail. Is that right?
Yes, it is.
And, and what is the harm that would occur if the drainage?
There, there is actually several aspects of potential harm. One is water quality, non-point source pollutants will not be reduced, which will be discharged to the DOT system, which DOT will not permit under any shape or form. Two, you will not have a reduction of runoff and runoff volume directed under the southbound entrance ramp to the head wall, to the area where Attorney Green showed the ponding is going to, you know, cause additional flooding because you, the portion of black rock under the Merritt Parkway Bridge is the defined low point. And more water there simply means more flooding. There's, that's what happens.
And we, and, and, you know, the, the standard that we have to look at is the quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if the application is granted as, as planned, right? Without conditions that we might impose in order to remediate that, that harm. You know, what I'm trying to understand is how we as a commission should think about, you know, me, whether that standard is met? And if so, how to articulate that, right? What, what is a quantifiable probability that a specific harm will result if this, if this project is built, in your opinion, with the, with the drainage system?
It, it's my professional opinion that the drainage system as proposed does not address water quality on the first step. That means you're going to have increased pollutant loads discharged to your receiving streams, not just the DOT system. Metals and hydrocarbons that are predominantly from our vehicles can cause adverse environmental impacts to aquatic species in those receiving streams. That is a quantifiable impact. There is more than ample literature, professional literature on the adverse impacts of metals and hydrocarbons on, let's term benthic organisms, the small creatures that live in the bottom of the streams. Secondly, with the extent of proposed impervious cover, there will be a substantial increase in the runoff volume. They'll be directed to the DOT system to a known flooding condition. Increased volume will clearly make the flooding session, flooding condition worse. If it occurs and somebody doesn't see that pond at night, which is possible when you're coming up Black Rock Turnpike, heading back towards Reading, you can easily hydroplane in a car and perhaps hit something. Or during the winter, additional water on that road, even a film will provide an opportunity for black ice to occur. And now you've got another safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trinkus, if I may, just briefly.
Yeah.
Mr. Trinkus, your level of confidence in this, is that, are you, is that to a reasonable certainty that?
Yes, it is. Yeah, this system as proposed, it, it's not going to address water quality based on my 40 years plus experience. You know, as proposed, you're going to have additional runoff volume and flooding, and that's 90% plus. That's how it works. Increased impervious cover leads to more runoff volume, leads to more flooding. There's no, there's no question about that.
So you say that there's more than a 90% chance that the system will fail?
Yes.
Yes. I have nothing further.
All right, very good. I have another topic, but so before I move on, does anyone else have any other questions for Mr. Trinkus about the engineering of the, of the, of the drainage system? Commissioner Braun?
So I have a concern that I believe it looks like there's just not going to be enough parking for the number of bedrooms. There's, I think, 160 some odd bedrooms for, you know, much fewer parking.
If I could, I, I don't want to get to parking just yet because I still want to talk to Mr. Trinkus.
It goes, it goes into that.
Okay, forgive me. Go ahead, go ahead. Please continue.
So my concern is, it's this neighbor who supposedly wants to give them an easement to grade, so there's sightline. If that's the same neighbor that owns the hill that's full of ledge behind it, and if, you know, this, if the parking becomes a disaster because people are wandering down to the commuter lot underneath the Merritt Bridge in flood conditions or whatnot, I imagine at some point there's going to be a negotiation and a purchase of the land and they'll need to blast out that hill. Would that create more, what would that entail? Would that, I can't even imagine what that would entail. And one other question, was there anything in the applicant's materials that mentioned blasting or in the wetlands permit? I can't find the wetland permit. Maybe it's the materials, but I only see the settlement agreement where the conservation, the wetlands permit from 2010. I guess the decision was that they didn't need a new hearing or a new permit application because this supposedly was staying in that footprint, so it was not a significant change. But I, I don't know what the original one said or if it said anything about blasting. My biggest concern is blasting because there's no subsurface hydro geological study to know what's under there.
If I may, to address the impact of increased parking in the ledge. Obviously, you know, ledge can be fractured where, you know, rainfall can infiltrate into the rock and move down through the rock. If you blast it out and you put in parking, now you have an impervious surface that doesn't have that ability to infiltrate via the cracks. Additionally, depending on the extent of the cut in the rock, and you can see this along any, you can see it on the Merritt, you can see it on I-85, I-84, where the state has done rock cuts, is you will also, at this time of year, see water bleeding out of the rock. So you can potentially intercept those cracks in the rock and have additional groundwater that you have to deal with as part of a stormwater management system. But it's more the function of removal of rock and putting in an impervious surface. It generates, you know, more runoff volume and generates more pollutant loads because you're using it for parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any other questions about this? Yes, Commissioner Levy?
Mr. Trinkus, in your report, you seem to be very concerned about the nature of the fill, the depth of the fill and the adequacy of that in terms of it providing adequate drainage beneath the various galleys. What if any tests, borings, perk tests specifically, would you feel would be necessary to determine, you know, what is there and the nature and quality of the fill and the rate of percolation? What sort of borings, what sort of tests would be required to answer those questions?
Soil borings generally are, you know, drilled down, they're an inch and a half, two inch diameter hole. And it's a, a very quick way to determine the depth to a bedrock, as an example. However, it doesn't tell you much about the soil. What you would need to do here is excavate test pits with a hydraulic excavator down to bedrock so that the actual soil profile can be observed and can be identified by either an engineer or soil scientist. And because of the size of the system and the change of the topography, I would probably dig about eight test pits where this underground gallery system is, at basically the four ends of the system. And then it's several locations within the main body of the system, you know, in the low points and the higher points to get a representative view of the soil. If you did indeed have native soils here at the bottom of this system or slightly below it, you would then have the excavator dig a wider area so it's safe to go into the test pit that deep because you don't want to get afoul of OSHA requirements. And then you want to do infiltration testing, which is two concentric rings. It's called an infiltrometer, and that gives you the vertical permeability of the soil. And you'd want to do that at or below the bottom of the proposed stormwater system. So a fairly substantial testing protocol would be required here. If this was all level ground with no changes in contour, you know, two, maybe three test pits would be adequate. But in this case, because of the topography changes, you've got to do a lot more of them to get a representative view of the soil at the various contour elevations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So Commissioner Braun, did you want to ask about the DEP recommendation or you want me to ask?
I'll, I'll let you ask.
So Mr. Trinkus. Sorry.
Commissioner, I, I have a question. I just am not getting my hand in. There it is.
Okay, go ahead.
One question. All right. Has there been any kind of a wetlands environmental survey of the, not the floor so much as the fauna in this, on this site? Because I've seen projects stopped dead by the existence of certain endangered species. And I, I haven't read any report like that.
Steve Trinkus, for the record, I have not seen any wetland assessment report. There is a wetlands on the, I guess would be the western corner of the site in that strip along Black Rock Turnpike.
Right.
But we also have not seen anything from the natural diversity database from the Connecticut DEP, which I believe is generally required by many applications to rule out the presence of threatened or endangered species, both animal and plant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for other hands? All right. Mr. Trinkus, there was one document which the commission asked to be added to the record here. It was the, the DEP guidelines on, guidance document for evaluating potential hydrologic impacts associated with blasting and development activities. Did you see that?
I, I saw it. I did not have a chance to fully review it. But if you have specific questions, I've had projects that we have blasted on, so I may be able to answer questions.
So this is a 2019, December 2019 document of the Connecticut DEP, and it deals with acid rock drainage, ARD.
Yes.
Are you familiar with acid rock drainage?
Yeah, what I actually, this topic came up on a site I had in Bethel. When you blast certain kinds of rock, and again, we don't know the type of rock here because we don't have a geotechnical investigation, certain types of rock when exposed to air and rainfall can result in leaching of compounds that effectively cause acid, acid, a P, a runoff which has a acidic pH to it. And hence it's ac, it's termed acid drainage. And that could, depending on the type of rock, could obviously cause all kinds of impacts. But without knowing the type of rock, it's all speculation as to what might happen. But that's basically the process that the exposed, the, the blasted bedrock, you know, is sitting in a pile on the site. It gets rained on. If it's, you know, got certain compounds in it, it may leach and then it gets discharged somewhere.
All right. So the guidance document expressly states that the developer and/or developer or applicant should retain a geologist, hydrogeologist or engineer, environmental professional to evaluate the underlying bedrock in terms of its potential to cause ARD. Do you agree with that?
I do with this extent of the cuts on this site. If you are only going to cut a couple feet of rock in an area, it likely would not be justifiable. But in this case, you've got some pretty substantial rock cuts. You should have a geotechnical investigation to establish how you're going to make the rock cuts because depending on the composition of the rock, the fractures within the rock, a, a cut face, you know, might not work if, if the cracks are facing downward because that will lead the rock to wanting to slide downhill. If the cracks go into the hillside, it's a much more stable, you know, face because the, you know, the rock is pushing into the hill, not to the cut face. So yeah, you need a geotechnical investigation for a site like this, in my professional opinion.
Okay. Your, your knowledge that, that was not done here.
I did not see anything in your record.
Are there drinking water wells within a 500 foot radius of the blasting site?
I do not have any knowledge on that point.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions on this subject? Okay, great. Thank you. Attorney Green?
Mr. Chairman, yes, if I may, I, I apparently mischaracterized the exterior finish on the...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, Joel, Attorney Green, but just so Mr. Trinkus doesn't leave, I have some questions for him before he might leave. I just wanted to not lose that opportunity.
Certainly.
Attorney Smith.
Attorney Smith, you're, you're free to ask him questions now if you like, or you can recall him in rebuttal, whichever you're, whichever you like.
Your discretion. I'm just hoping that we get an opportunity to do our rebuttal.
Oh, you, you will, you will. And I expect that it'll be tonight. And if it's not, then it'll be at our next meeting. But dare I say.
I hope so.
Our next meeting. Now, I, I recollect that Attorney Green told us that he was nearly finished.
I am.
Not rushing you at all, not rushing you at all, but, you know, I believe that to be the case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That is correct. Just briefly, I, I would like just briefly to call Mr. Parker to address the exterior treatment of the reduced mass relocated structure, if I may.
Thank you, Joel, Joel, and thank you, commissioners. The, the exterior of the building, as we showed in the drawing, we were actually suggesting that the base of the building be made of brick and that, that would equate to the parking garage portion. So that that essentially creates the foundation for the building, as you typically find in this area. And that the building above be shingles, which is something that the applicant had proposed. But the applicant had proposed a number of different materials that created, if you look at their, their colored rendering in particular, a very cacophonous collection of, of, of discordant materials that we feel would call a lot of attention to it, especially given the, the size of the building against the, the wooded terrain. And so we would suggest that the exterior be, be either weathered shing, shingles left to weather, or that they be mandated, that they be painted in, in sort of woodland tones and, and hopefully not with jarring contrasting, contrasting trim. One other thing that I would say as an architect concern about preservation and, and, and about the concerns of the Merritt Parkway as national, national register listed, having a national register listing, which is quite an honor. The, the, the bridge, the underpass that goes under the Merritt is in itself one of the great historic bridges that, that are the reason that the... that are the reason that the Merritt Parkway was placed on the national register. So that that underpass cannot feasibly be altered because it is protected. And so the fact that there are no sidewalks on either side there, it's, there's not an easy way to accommodate sidewalks. And so if there were a desire to create a pedestrian way under the Merritt, I would suggest that would probably have to be a tunnel. And I don't know how that would be done or how that would be paid for. And there are also concerns about how one would do a crosswalks, given the complicated intersections and on and off ramps that you find in this area, especially given the steep terrains. One final thing that we mentioned at the previous hearing, but that hasn't come up very much this evening. The current setback from the on-ramp, as shown by the applicant, is only 10 feet, which is not adequate at all to provide a planting buffer. So that we would, we at the Merritt Parkway Conservancy would strongly urge the commission to, if this project is approved, to move the building or to somehow create at least a 25-foot buffer to allow for planting, which we feel is absolutely needed to soften and protect the Parkway.
So I don't know if any of the, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you or the commission members have any further questions for Mr. Parker.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Parker? And I don't see any hands.
So my only remaining comment is that I note that in response to one of the commissioners' questions, there was some discussion about the neighboring property, the property above and west. The seven acres of property that form, that surround this property. I believe at one time, those properties, and I don't know what the state of the title is to that property. At one time, I think that some of the ownership was common, meaning I'm aware that Mr. Richter, who's one of the principals of the applicant, may have had an interest and he may still own the apartment property. I'm not sure. But in addressing that, I would simply say to the commission that that entity is not a party to this application, nor is there any easement of record or any rights of record that are part of this application. So the fact that the ownership may still be common, I don't know. While, you know, that, I don't think that's relevant to this application. And the application rises and falls on the documents that are in the application at the present time. With that, I will thank the commission for your rapt attention and your generous patience. And thank you.
Thank you very much, Attorney Green. Appreciate that presentation. Let's see now. I'll make a final call here for public comment. Emmeline, Ms. Harrigan, do we have anyone signed up in the chat?
We do. We start with Richard Bersik, followed by Lauren and Dan Diego.
Okay, Mr. Bersik.
Hi, good evening. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Dr. Richard Bersik. I live at 4364 Black Rock Turnpike. So that's about 350 yards north of the proposed application and on the other side of the road. My wife and I, with our children, have lived here for 17 years. And so we have several concerns with regard to this application, especially as they, vis a vis safety especially. The first being sightline. Yes, there is a sightline study and it does show those sightlines going over adjacent property. My question is whether or not the sightlines have been measured from the driver's perspective. Have been driven this road probably 10,000 times, this section of road at least 10,000 times. I can tell you that when approaching from the southeast, coming up that hill, both on my bicycle or in a car, I have difficulty seeing those driveways until I'm within about 25 feet of them. I drive an SUV, so I'm higher than the standard three and a half feet that was measured by the sightline expert who testified. I can also tell you that because of that change in elevation coming from the north, that I don't, I can't see that driveway on the right-hand side. If I'm coming from my home, which is north of the project, I can't see that driveway until I'm within about 50 feet of that road. And I've done that both on my bike and on a car. And so although they have measured those sightlines in the perspective of the person exiting the driveway, I don't know that they've measured them in the perspective of oncoming drivers. And I can tell you that on certain days, especially in the morning, that area gets very congested with people getting off of the Merritt and going to Congress Street. And so that those two driveways being across from each other with the additional traffic coming out, despite the traffic report, we already have traffic buildup at that location, as I said, especially on that north side of Merritt in the morning. And I'm going to apologize in advance because I did not hear public comment. I was not able to attend the prior meeting. So if I'm repeating what some other people are saying, I apologize to the commissioners in advance for that. And so with regards to both sightline, traffic density, and also the locations of the driveway, I think that all three of those things really do present a quantifiable safety issue, you know, from this, from this project. The second issue is the flooding and the water runoff. I can tell you that, yes, there is flooding, of course, that you all have mentioned underneath the trestle. But when that flooding occurs, or even actually before that flooding occurs, the system gets overwhelmed and we have flooding in front of our property well before there's flooding down below. And the sewer system, even after they regraded and paved those areas, is not adequate. And so that hydroplaning occurs. I can tell you, we've lived here now 17 years. Our telephone pole in front of our house, which gives us electrical cable and telephone service, has been taken down by a car at least twice in those 17 years. And I'm sure those accidents have been reported and occur on the accident report that was presented with the application. What does not occur on that accident report is the mailbox. I've lost two mailboxes because of hydroplaning during a storm. I actually have two stone pillars in front of that, on each side of my driveway. One of those was taken out by a car actually coming from the northbound because, again, of hydroplaning. I'm sure that probably was on the accident report. And we also have had several bushes. And frequently, at least two times I can think of, there have been parts of cars in the grassy knoll in front of my house after a storm. And I think that several of these incidents certainly were not recorded in the accident reports by the state because there was no accident to be recorded. They hit something of mine. We filed an insurance claim for it. And so I certainly do have concern with regards to the water runoff. And again, that concern being not just damage to property and also what happens below the, under the Merritt, but also to safety. I know that one person who took out my pillar was taken to Bridgeport Hospital when that happened. A third concern, sorry, I guess I made that, yeah, a third concern. This has been mentioned, but it goes to the density and scope of this project. Yes, it's not, it's not consistent with the area in any way. It will immediately transform our neighborhood into a high-density residential area in very short order. But with that, what I have not seen in the application, and of course, I'm not an expert in these things, but just from my civilian point of view, an adequate play space for any of the children that may be living in that apartment building. I assume based on, and I think these are fair assumptions, based on the number of bedrooms and the number of two bedrooms, that there's a fairly good chance that there will be young children living in this, in this project. I did not see, I saw a nice parking lot and a nice parking garage, but I did not see adequate play space or recreation area for those children. So my question is going to be, what about that? What about those children who want to play outside and what about the safety of that? And I think what kind of interweaves or blends into that same issue is the, and this was mentioned, I think, today, lack of sidewalks, lack of pedestrian accommodations. If there are people that live in that property that for some reason their car breaks down or they don't have a car for that day because someone else took it and they have to walk to public transportation, certainly that's going to create a significant public safety issue. And with regards to public transportation, it's been mentioned that there isn't really any service, public transportation serving that area. But in the event in the future that there's a need for a bus line to run up to that, what is going to be the accommodations for that? Has the developer in the project, and I have to admit I haven't read the whole plan, so maybe that's in there, has the developer taken into a place, how will they accommodate public transportation? Certainly, it will probably be not feasible to have the buses just stop on Black Rock Turnpike in what is already a heavily congested, busy area, especially during travel time when people would be going to work or coming home from work. So I have a definite safety issue that I bring up with regards to young children who may live in the development, pedestrians coming out of the development. How are they going to be maintained and safe? And I know that it was mentioned about how to put a walkway underneath the, underneath the Merritt would require a tunnel. And then also future bus lines or other public transportation. How is that going to be safely accommodated within the construct of this plan? Blasting is an issue that I have with regards to, and I know this was brought up, I'm not an engineer for sure. But it doesn't seem that there has been what I would call a data-driven report to look at what the effect of blasting is going to have on either Greenfield Hunt or our properties across the way, or the properties adjacent to this. There has been some, obviously, this has been brought up and a rebuttal has been made. But based on tonight's testimony, it doesn't sound like that rebuttal, as I said, is a data-driven one. So I think that that blasting issue certainly, with regards to safety and safety of us, because we live in the houses and structures adjacent to this project, the safety of not only us, but also the people up in Greenfield Hunt. So I think that, you know, my concerns with regards to public safety, and I'm not an expert, so I probably can't quantify them. But certainly the sightlines, certainly the sightlines, I think, creates an increased safety issue with regards to accidents, especially for people approaching, not necessarily exiting or entering the development, but approaching it from north or south. The flooding, the pedestrian elements, the public safety elements, and then also especially the lack of recreational space for those young children who may be living in the area. And if somebody is a pedestrian exiting that, needs to be a pedestrian exiting that project, how can, what are the ways in which to make them safe? I want to thank you for your time. We've loved living here in Fairfield. And as I said, we certainly have a major concern with regards to how this will change our neighborhood. Certainly, the other developments that are this large that encroach upon the Merritt occur at major highway intersections, not at just a county road that's one lane in each direction. And so I think that that's a major issue. And I know that's not necessarily an issue for the affordable housing law. But so I think is a major issue that we should be considered. So I thank you for your time and for hearing my concerns.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bersik. Appreciate your time. Ms. Harrigan?
Yes, we have Lauren and Dan Diego going next, followed by Samantha Highwell. And then that's all I have on the list.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, Diego Delon here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please.
Yes, thank you. I live at 4321 Black Rock Turnpike, which is on the same side as the proposed development and just two properties north of there. So just like Mr. Burcik prior to me, I have traveled these roads a number of times and seen the the traffic along here, day in and day out, different times of the day, weekends, mornings, nights. And, you know, live through this. So we, it is a concern of mine that when you create a huge massive development like this that doesn't have pedestrian access, there are no sidewalks. The only way to get to here is via a car. And I just don't feel that there is enough accommodation for vehicles there. Even if you're going to build a sidewalk, where's it going? There's no commercial area walkable from here anyway. You're not going shopping on foot. You're, I mean, you're not going to go hang out anywhere locally on foot. Everything's going to be contained within the development. So that's a concern of mine and the parking to go with it. Currently, the HiHo across the street in Barcelona as well, share, I don't know if they, what kind of deal they have with the property owner, but they use that parking lot on the weekends. And, you know, so the capacity there, I'm not speaking for them, but if there's already an overflow of parking on that side of the road, I don't, I can't see how an overflow of parking on this side of the road is going to be any better. You know, Friday nights and Saturday nights, even during COVID, it's been pretty busy there every single night. And those parking lots are pretty full. The overall scale of the project is a little concerning now. I mean, I have no problems with issues and I agree that their Section 8 housing needs to be developed. But I just, the 94-plus units, it's almost like all the, you're trying to accommodate the minimum requirement of the town of Fairfield, all in one complex here. While I have no doubts that anything will be eventually built there, I just don't think the scale of this fits in the neighborhood. The aesthetics of the neighborhood, we moved here, you know, to be, to not have neighbors, especially 94 of them. And this just doesn't seem to fit within the look and feel and the overall neighborhood aesthetic of the area. Also, yes, I can attest that the flooding does occur. And we live, we have wetlands that travel through our property from the hills above. And there's a lot of natural water that comes down and flows through my property under the property adjacent to the complex and then obviously down the road as well. And when it rains and obviously the snow now, the springtime coming up, you'll see a lot of that going downhill and that underpass has been flooded a numerous amount of times. And the other concern I have is just what effect it has on the wildlife and the wetlands habitat itself. You know, there's, obviously, you spoke prior to me and addressed that concern as well. What kind of will blasting affect any of that, any of the natural wildlife that lives there? We enjoy having that peacefulness that around us. And it's a little concerning with the disruption that this could potentially cause. And I've sat through all three meetings here with you guys and I appreciate you letting me speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I guess it's my turn?
Yes, it is.
I'm Samantha Highwell and I live at 193 Eastly Lane. So it's north and not as close to this intersection as the previous two speakers. And this is, today was the first day I heard about all this. I guess I got an email and I said, oh my goodness, 94 apartments right there? Now, this is my, you know, I've probably traveled this road more than any other to get to town and to do my shopping and to obviously get on and off Merritt. And so I'm amazed that it's even being considered. Because all the roads that are in and out, I mean, to me right now, it's already congested. Coming down the hill, there's the HiHo on the left. And that's got two entrances, so in and out, and that's busy. So you have to watch out for that. And then there's, you know, traffic coming in as you, you know, pass the HiHo. And then there's, you know, traffic coming in as you, you know, pass the HiHo from, from the other side of Congress and from people getting off, like when I'm getting off, when I've been going south, people coming in there, and then, you know, getting on to go south. You know, so there's all, there's so much in and out. Then you go the underpass, and then you've got the parking lot on your left, and then you've got people coming in from Congress, and then you've got people coming, getting off the merit, coming in there, and then there's another park and lock, and then you've got the entrance going north. It's like, it's like a traffic jam now. So I really can imagine having 94, probably more than that, cars, right? A lot of the apartments would have probably more than two cars, and only one entrance and exit. That doesn't even seem like a very good design. The other thing is, so there's just, you know, it's confusing enough as it is. I mean, it's almost like, you know, rotary or something. I mean, it's just the in and the out of, of, well, the traffic, I mean, they added a traffic light recently. I've lived in the area 22 years, so longer than the other two people. So I've been up and down a couple more thousand times probably than they have. So yeah, there's so much traffic. And as I say, even the HiHo with, with in and out, that's two entries and exits, and it's still often very crowded, and you have to wait, and people were coming in and out. So I don't know, I guess there'd be more lights and stuff like that. The other thing is that the hill is quite steep. So like, when it is raining and stuff like that, I mean, it's a, it's a pretty steep incline. So, you know, if there's a driveway coming out and people going up, I mean, I just think it's incredibly dangerous. There's a lot of traffic density, and I, I think there's a real safety factor that needs to be considered. So, I said, I haven't had a lot of time, I just heard about this today, but it was like, what, 94 units? It, it doesn't make sense. You know, I mean, I just, I can't imagine how bad the traffic would be, and how many more lights, and how unsafe it would be with, with, you know, people trying to negotiate all the entrances and exits and parking locks, and, and it's, I don't think that would make any good sense. The other thing, sort of, I, I understand that, you know, just tax-wise, that there would probably be a net loss, because no matter what, you know, taxes are paid, you know, there's probably be more children going to the schools, and as I've understood, that's a problem that happens when you think you're getting more tax revenue, but you're spending more money because there are more students going to the school. So, anyway, I, I strongly oppose, if I have a vote, against, I don't think this is a great use of, of the space. I think it's very problematic and dangerous. So I guess I've said my piece.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Harrigan, that's the last name on the list, yes?
We actually had somebody make an additional request, a request of Pete Gallagher, and that's the last one I have.
Hello, I'm Pete Gallagher. I just heard about this meeting tonight. I was curious about it. I live in Bridgeport, Connecticut, on Fox Street. I grew up in Bethel and spent the previous 25 years of my life or so there. And I've traveled on Route 58 many times. I just want to thank the commission for having the meeting. Thank you to all the presenters. I'll try and be brief. You know, I think there is a need for more housing in the region, and so I applaud the applicant for trying to put forth a plan that accommodates more housing in the region. As a look overall in the area, I think it makes a natural sense to develop more in the Black Rock Turnpike, so as you continue to grow from that area and go towards the Merritt Parkway, in my opinion, it makes sort of sense that you would expand, you know, your development and your housing. But I do believe the comments of the public are valid. Just driving on the road my whole life, it is a fast road. There is not a lot of pedestrian access or, you know, amenities, and transit does not go that far. So I would kind of call upon the Fairfield Commission to kind of consider the lack of pedestrian amenities there, the lack of transit, and if you were to continue to grow and develop the region, I think this sort of highlights a lacking need that the town does not provide. So I would, you know, whether or not this plan goes through or not, I think you would need to kind of look more into the transit aspect, increasing pedestrian amenities, bike paths, transit, expansion of the network, and that sort of thing. That's all I got, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. So, so that's it for signups, yes? Harrigan? Yep, very good. So I'll just ask then one last time if there's any other members of the public that are on the call that want to be heard. Okay, hearing none, and I'm gonna conclude the public comment portion of the hearing, and I'm gonna turn it over to Attorney Smith for the applicant's rebuttal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, professional staff. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. I'm a land use attorney with the law firm of Walter &amp; Pearson, and here before you're representing the owner applicant, Fairfield Medical LLC. I do have a couple of quick questions for Steve, or Mr. Trinkus, I'm sorry.
Well, it's all right.
I just don't see you, Steve, that's all I'm saying.
No, I had the audio on, though.
So, Mr. Trinkus, are you aware that there's a wetlands permit approval for the regulated activities associated with this development?
I had not seen one, Attorney Smith.
Are you aware that the town engineer did not indicate any issues with the stormwater system or the site development?
I have not seen a memo from Laura Ullie on this project.
And you made, Mr. Trinkus, you made reference to flooding conditions. Did you, what was that based on, that photograph that was in the record?
Actually, no. Years ago, I drove through ponded water when I lived in Reading, under, under, on Black Rock, under the Merritt Parkway.
Did you perform any type of investigation concerning historic flooding of that particular area, or did you perform a, an inspection of the catch basin located in the, in the Black Rock Turnpike at that location?
No, I did not.
And I'm just reviewing the notes. I apologize for not being here. I was in, last go around, I was in, you know where, I was in Roxbury, and I just found out that was approved. But I do the notes, and I did watch most of the, most of the video, but you did testify that three feet of separation is required from the bottom of the infiltration system to the bedrock. You need three, at minimum, three feet per the DEEP guidelines?
Yes, that's what is highly recommended.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Trinkus, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Trinkus, thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, oh, with, with your permission, what I'd like to do is, we have a prepared rebuttal. We did submit material that has been shared with you, and we'd like to first address the traffic, and then we'd like to then go on to the engineering-related questions, and then after that, we'll deal with some of the allegations concerning the Merritt Parkway. So with your permission, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. Dave Sullivan, our traffic engineer.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chris. Again, Dave Sullivan from SLR, professional traffic engineer in Connecticut. Most of what I'm going to talk about here, most of it you've heard already in the testimony, but in light of some of the public commentary, I just have some clarification points. And this information was submitted in a memorandum form. The first one, there was some discussion about the peak hours, and my recollection was that the medical office building generates all day, and residential generates during peak hours, so the peak hours will be worse. Well, as we indicated in the traffic study, during the morning peak hour, there'd be 34 trips for this development, which would be a decrease of what was estimated for the medical office building by 26 trips. Likewise, in the afternoon, we estimate 41 trips from this development, and that would be a decrease, it would be less than half of what was predicted for the medical office building. There was, again, I touched on some of the parking statistics, and I just want to reiterate them. We have done a number of parking counts in suburban multifamily apartments, and we have some 60 data points, thereabouts, and what we found is one-bedroom units have a demand of 1.2 spaces per unit, and two-bedroom apartments have a demand of 1.49 spaces per unit. So if you do the math, that would come up with a demand for this particular development of 132 spaces based on it being a suburban location. Similarly, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they don't break it down by bedroom, but they say on a weighted average, you could expect 1.31 spaces per bedroom or for apartment, which would give you about 123 spaces based on that data source, and as has been indicated, there'll be 136 spaces on this site. And by the way, the, the ratio, the parking ratio is approximately 1.45 on this site. So it's almost 1.5, which is a fairly common multifamily multiplier. Next, there was some commentary that traffic counts were done during COVID-19, so they weren't accurate. The counts that we based our analyses on were done before COVID-19. They were done in December of 2018, as a matter of fact. We did do one count during COVID, but that was only to gather the speed data, and if anything, it would have, because of lower traffic because of COVID, it probably would have resulted in faster speeds, but nonetheless, that's the only count we did during COVID. Vehicle queues and vehicle operations at the signalized intersections, we did acknowledge that there's some operational challenges out there today. We looked at that, and what we determined that we could make some changes to the operation of the signal in terms of adjusting some of the timings, and by doing so, we could eliminate any deterioration of level of service and in fact improve the level of service for some critical movements, and at the same time reduce the queues, most specifically, the queue between the traffic signal just east or south of the site and the site driveway, which is important that the queues are not backing out from that signal through the driveway. The last thing that I'll touch on again is sightlines. We talked earlier in the presentation, had some questions from Attorney Green. So I think I covered most of that with the intersection site distances, 480 feet, based on 43 miles per hour. I do, I heard Dr. Bersik's commentary, and I could appreciate the conditions at his driveway. I'm glad our driveway isn't his driveway up the street there, but the sightlines for vehicles driving on Black Rock Turnpike approaching this site, I think you could think of it this way, if you're sitting in your car with your eyes three and a half feet up, and you're looking at a car approaching you, and you see their eyes at three and a half feet, it's just logic that that car could see you as well. It's called stopping site distances. The criteria for stopping site is much less than intersection site distances, but in this case, it's at least as long as the, the intersection site distances are because you're looking along the roadway. So that is, that is my summary of comments. I think I'm just looking at my notes here to see if there's anything else I wanted to address. I don't believe so. So I will turn it back to Chris, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you, David, Mr. Sullivan. For the record, again, Chris Smith, I would just like to note with regard to the parking, I know that you've, we're, we're very close to 1.5, and I would just, for the record, refer you to your, the Garden Homes case with Brunson Road, 195 Conap, 736. That was a 2019 decision, you're very familiar with it. There, there was 108 parking spaces for 90 units, which comes out to 1.2. I am reading the decision, speaking with counsel, or communicating with counsel. I understand that according to the court decision that you took the position that should be 1.5, the court said 1.2 was fine, and from what I understand, with the Fairchild application or matter that was resolved, I understand with the commission, that was, there were 60 parking spaces for 56 units, which would be 1.07. I think that, that is supple, that's supplemental evidence to what is very detailed and historic evidence that Mr. Sullivan has presented you with relative to the parking at 1.45 per dwelling being sufficient and not creating a public health safety issue relative to this application.
If I might, I just want to mention that there was a typographic error in comment two. I stated the correct number, but the letter does have a typo there. So I just want to make sure that's corrected for the record.
136, right?
The 118 should be 132.
But before you, before you move on, if I could just ask a question or two? Attorney Smith, just, could, could you just share what the applicant understands to be an arrangement, if any, with the HiHo for overflow parking that's been apparent to members of the public, including myself? You know, while the, while the site has been, been, been fallow? What's the deal?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought you were done.
No, I was, I was just summing up. What's the deal?
There, I, there is no, there is no specific, I'm just checking here since I can't turn and talk to my client as we would in normal situations, but I just received confirmation, I was going to say that there is no leasehold interest, there's no anything arrangement with, between my client and HiHo. If people have been parking there, they've been parking there, I suppose.
Okay. And, you know, it somewhat begs the question that if there was a need for the HiHo to, you know, have overflow parking, and those cars now are not going to be able to park, well, I guess I should ask the predicate question. When the applicant here develops this parcel, will visitors of the, the HiHo and the restaurant be permitted to park, use the, the parking on the applicant's property as overflow parking?
No, it would be private property.
Right. Okay, so presumably, over the course of time, there's been a need for that. It's not going to be available to them anymore, and so they're going to be parking on the street, I would presume. Is there parking on the street here on, on the Black Rock Turnpike?
Mr. Chairman, for the record, that would have nothing to do with this site nor this site development. That would be up to the business operation, HiHo.
You're, you're jumping ahead of me, you're jumping ahead of me, and, and I'm not planning a trap of this kind. I'm just wondering, is there parking on the street? And my reason for asking has to deal with the sightline conditions and, and the like, and may, the, the potential that there would be some impact in, in that regard, because the change in condition of the, of the parcel here, right? It was, has been historically available for this overflow parking, which it's been used for, it won't be available anymore. So I'm just trying to understand sort of that, that landscape, if you will. Can you help me?
I, again, that's not relevant to this application. Whether people have parked illegally or whatever without permission on my client's property has nothing to do with this application.
Okay, is there on-street parking, Mr. Sullivan? In front of the parcels here, in front of the applicant's parcel, and in front of the HiHo on Black Rock Turnpike?
I do not, I do not see no parking signs, but there's, other than travelway, there's a very small shoulder, so I would think if people did start habituating that shoulder for parking, it would quickly be posted, no parking. it would quickly be posted, no parking, but the deal to me.
Right, and if people-
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, to just try to be responsive to your questions. I've been advised that Barcelona does have valet parking, uh, where apparently they actually use some of the commuter lots uh, for their overflow.
Sure, thank you. And if there were pa- cars parked on the street in front of the applicant's, um, uh, you know, in front of the, the subject parcel, would, would those parked cars impact the sightline analysis that you did?
Well, um, believe it or not, parked cars are not considered um, the sightline restrictions. For example, I mean downtown environments, you wouldn't consider a parked car a, a sightline um, uh, obstruction, uh, because they're movable objects, they're temporary objects. And you could pull out to the um, the far side bumper of that car. So it would be a different calculation, um, or a different analysis, but it would not um, uh, most times it would not affect the um, calculation unless it was um, such that uh, the road was curving away and they became ob- obstructed in that way.
Right, okay, thank you, sorry, thank you, Mr. Smith.
I think we, I think we've all heard that answer before, Mr. Chairman. With your permission, I said, I think we've heard that answer before, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't believe that anyone has been a- asked about on-street parking in the context of this public hearing before.
No, with, with another application I was referring to, I apologize. But with your permission, I'd like to uh, introduce or turn the presentation over to Jason Spath or Mike Petrola from the Huntington Company.
Hi, uh, Chairman Wagner, members of the commission, my name is Jason Spath. I'm the co-owner of the Huntington Company and land surveying and civil engineering firm in uh, Fairfield since nineteen twenty-one. I am a licensed lands fair and the managing member of uh, the Huntington Company. Um, there was a lot addressed, I'm going to go over the bulk of the rebuttal, uh, Mr. Trinkus' report. I do have Mike Petrola on, who is the um, special engineer and licensed lands fair as well. That did the calculations to discuss any specifics. Um, want to kind of address, uh, before I get into the specifics of Mr. Trinkus' report, I'll address some of the items that came up in discussion tonight. Um, the first one, and just to get some of the bookkeeping out of the way, um, it was asked who the owner of the adjacent property is. Uh, you know, uphill and to the right of it, where that strip is owned in front of our property. That is One Way Associates, it's uh, owned by that entity. There is an existing easement on the entire fifty-foot strip along Black Rock Turnpike that's been in place since, actually was recorded on June seventh, twenty seventeen. Our, our applicant has the right to grade, maintain, plant, um, do anything that they need to do in that area as far as to um, for sightlines, grading purposes, planting, as I said, maintenance, um, to keep those in that position. And it has been filed, it is existing on the land records, that's why it's not part of this application, but it has been existent since twenty seventeen. Um, there was some, and I'm just going to adjust this quick, there was some talk about relocating the structure. Um, everyone's mentioned about pushing the structure, let's slide fifteen feet, let's do this. Well, unfortunately, sliding a structure fifteen feet, there's an existing conservation easement. I believe that came up in the two meetings ago, somebody talked about the conservation easement. But there is a conservation easement that the building just can't be slid around on the site. So it's, it's easy to say, it's not easy to do, so I, I just wanted to bring that up. Um, we'll get into um, we'll get into that, let's talk about uh, Commissioner Brown brought up parking on the adjacent site. That in the future, it may come up and there may be parking on the uh, adjacent site. That's not part of this application at this time. And if parking was ever pr- uh, proposed on the adjacent site, obviously, there would be a site plan done, there would be approvals done, there would be adequate draining, uh, drainings provided for that additional parking at that time. So, you know, we don't anticipate any additional parking required. We're saying that our parking is adequate for the building that's being designed. But if that was ever to come up, it would be in front of this commission as well as inland wetlands or conservation for the appropriate approvals um, at that time. Um, there are no wetlands um, present on this site. This site has been through extensive um, conservation and inland, inland wetlands planning. There was past violations that have since been cleared. Um, one of those violations that we're going to talk about um, in depth a little bit later, but is the actual filling of the site over the time, this area that we talk about. And I'll address that in depth a little bit later, but so the knowledge is out there that the site has been done, the site has been filled, that work was done. Um, this, this site was a nursery for many years, as everyone knows, that was called the Plant Factory. Um, and conservation had a very extensive file on it. And there was conservation easement placed on the property, there was remediation done um, to rectify all that. But I do want to point out, there is public record available. Um, we're not trying to hide anything, um, we're not doing anything. The, the topo that we show on our plan today is what's existing today. Um, it's not what was there in the past, and we have, if you want to say, well, I don't want to say insider information because it's all public record. You can go to the town topo maps and see that the grades have changed in this corner that I'll be talking about shortly. Um, so let me get on to um, and, and as well as that, um, they talked about invasive species, um, wetlands mitigation, has anything been reviewed? Yes, conservation reviewed this application, had no comments. Um, that is because they just approved it within the months prior to submission. So it's been through an extensive review about um, any on-site um, wetlands issue that were brought up tonight and questions asked.
Mr. Spath, just uh, before you go on, if I could just interrupt you for a moment, because you, you just mentioned the fill and I wanted to ask someone, maybe it's you, um, about that. You know, you, we, we heard from Mr. Trinkus who, who opined that the drainage system would be on bedrock. That it appeared to him from the plan that would be a blasting bedrock and that the drainage system would be on bedrock and would not have the two or three feet of, of uh, of drainage, you know, of, of soil there. You're talking about the, is the plan for the drainage system to be on the fill that you're talking about? Or is the drainage system on the bedrock?
I'm going to get to this in depth shortly, but that drainage system, and I'll explain the numbers in a little bit, um, is actually going into the original soil. Um, it's not being placed in the fill. The, the fill, I might as well get to this now. The fill in that area, um, as we're talking here, I'm talking about is the southern portion of the property where the large detention system is.
Yeah.
Um, that area where we have now currently shown as elevation one thirty at that corner of the building. Historically, and as shown on the, the town topo map before this was filled, that elevation was one twenty. What we are proposing to do is remove the fill that was placed on-site in this corner. And again, this was, uh, wetlands knew about this, so I apologize that we didn't bring it up in more depth to you. Um, we're bringing that grade in that corner of that building. The reason that parking garage is designed at elevation one twenty is because that was the existing grade in that south, the southerlymost corner of this proposed building. Um, so we're taking that ten feet of material that's non-native, we don't know what that material is. It's just rubble that's been in there. Um, so we're removing it from the site and we're bringing the actual site in that area down to its original grade. So when everyone's, and I'll explain stormwater, whenever it's talking about how tall this building's got to be, they have to realize from what they see in the field today, that ground elevation, it's not going to be that. We're going to take it back to its original grade. Therefore, it's eight to twelve feet lower over on that end of the building where the parkway on-ramp is. Um, but that being said, I'll address the stormwater. So that takes us down to elevation one twenty. Our stormwater is designed at the bottom elevation of one oh nine point six. Although Mr. Trinkus says that if you dig ten to twenty or twenty to forty inches down, that you're going to hit bedrock. That fact is incorrect. The reason is that we knew this prior to our original design is because, again, the Huntington Company's worked on this prop- property since nineteen forty-four, long before I was alive. And we do have old records that we are privileged to have. Um, but that being said, just because of the last meeting, Friday, March fifth, our client, I recommended he hired um, a boring company. So just to prove the point, so we got the answer for the commission, we went out and did soils, borings in these um, proposed stormwater recharge areas. So he brought up a lot of this, or we don't know where they were done, and we don't know where this. This is something that normally i- is not passed on, the testing is done in-house, the design is done in-house and shared with the engineering department as part of the record. Um, we're not trying to withhold any information, where he was saying earlier where, well, you dug a test hole at the northern part and the elevation's one twenty. Um, actually, where we did that test hole, the existing elevation was one seventeen point eight. Uh, the reason I know this is because I was personally out there when the testing was being done. So he's making assumptions that it was one twenty, it was really one seventeen eight, minus twelve, takes down to one oh six. That gives you your, that system area is designed at one oh nine six, that gives you three point six feet above the system. Therefore, we meet the guidelines of the three feet, the minimum separation of the ledge. The larger system, um, we had an elevation of, again, we did that refusal in uh, one eighteen or um, one eighteen. Um, took us down to one oh eight. The northern end of that system was done at elevation one thirty, we went down twenty-five feet with a drill. No refusal. The reason I stopped them at twenty-five feet, there was no reason for us to go farther because that took us um, four point six feet below the proposed um, system that we're designing.
Right, and you didn't hit bedrock in any of these tests?
No, this, this, so when we say we go to refusal, we're going to refusal, we were looking specifically for bedrock. When we say refusal, on the other one, we say we went down twelve feet, yes, we hit refusal. Now, refusal does not always mean bedrock when you're doing borings. It, it could be a very large rock that they just couldn't drill through at that time. Again, we are below, more than three feet below the bottom of the proposed system. The other thing um, that was done with our system design, our system is actually done on a lower basis elevation. You ask why? Because we personally like to build in a factor that if we have to make modifications, which I'll get into, which is standard sometimes with drainage systems as construction begins, we can actually take the entire system as design, which Mr. Trinkus might have missed this, and we can raise the entire system roughly three point eight feet to four feet above where we have it designed, and it would still work adequately for the entire site drainage. So if for some reason we hit bedrock, we can actually raise our system. We like to keep it lower to keep the pitches of the pipe coming out at a flatter percentage and not have the water exiting so a- at a steep percent. But as designed, so Mr. Green said, we haven't reduced, we haven't provided any new plans, we aren't changing the plans. It's as designed, work, based on the bedrock, the drilling, the drilling that we did on just last Friday, just to, to reiterate to the commission that we did these system areas, marked them out and using surveying methods, so we knew where we were doing them. We elevated them, we drilled them, we have the depths. Um, so the stormwater by putting it in bedrock, th- that's, it's just a false statement. Um, we are not doing that, we would never do that. Of course, the system would not work if it was designed in bedrock, you're creating a pool. Everything Mr. Trinkus said, you're creating a pool, you're doing this, the fact is the bedrock's not there. Um, it's great that he's saying in his, one time he said in his written report, in his twenty years of experience, something. But then tonight, he said in his forty years of experience, so I don't know where to take him or, and I don't know him personally, but-
Mr. Spath, so you just said there, there's no bedrock. So i- is, is there not any bedrock that you need to deal with on the site in terms of blasting?
So we're going to move on to, so let me just finish the stormwater and we'll move on, Mr. Wagner, uh, Chairman Wagner.
Well, you started attacking Mr. Trinkus for no reason.
No, I'm going to, I'm going to continue on, there is, so-
Mr. Spath, if I could-
Yeah, Commissioner Newton, I see you, and Attorney Smith, I see you as well, okay?
I just had a question for Mr. Spath before we move on to, to the other topic.
And, and Commissioner Noonan has, has a question as well, okay, before we move on.
No, 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 Commissioner Noonan, you go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, the information you would, uh, you were lying upon saying there's no bedrock, you would, is that information that you have provided to us? Or is that the information you're talking about with the drilling last Friday? Or is that information previously provided? Can you specify where that's from?
That, that information has not been sent over to you at the time because it was done, we were just able to get a drilling rig um, with a track, a track system to get to the area of the sites that we needed to late on Friday. Um, so w- we did not have time to release that data. Um, the borings were done, um, we will be putting together a map in the future um, to supply to Laura Pooley, the town engineer, um, as part of the record, so she has it. Um, but no, we have not supplied it to you.
Okay, I mean, I can understand then Mr. Trinkus' point that uh, based on his experience and not having this information, he thought, he believed bedrock was there. And maybe you're a little too hard on him with uh, false statements and such. Because even now, if you had bed, if you have drillings and stuff, uh, saying that the system is going to work because there's no bedrock, uh, and that was one of the main points of uh, uh, Mr. Trinkus' is, I mean, that seems like that information maybe it should come to us because it's part of the record, I'm not saying I'm going to be able to necessarily understand it as Ms. Pooley probably would, but I think that should be something that goes into the record. And even, if not just the record, but shared with uh, Mr. Trinkus and Attorney Green.
We, we sure, we shared, we shared the depths of the holes that we did in our rebuttal. Um, like I said, unfortunately, we did not have the formal report from the drilling company in time to release it to the commission. But the depths of the holes are in our rebuttal to them. Um, and it's not Mr. Trinkus, but he's stating that twenty to forty inches when the, the site was clearly filled, if research is done, you can tell that. So we're just letting you know, we know the history of the property and, and that is why that was done that way.
Okay.
Very well, Attorney Smith?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to clarify for Commissioner Noonan and the uh, commission, uh, Mr. Spath, if you can, um, is this, is the stormwater system that's the subject of this application, is it substantially the same as that that was uh, was proposed with the medical office building that was approved for this site?
The elevation of the se- the, the stormwater system is the same that was approved for the medical building.
And as far as you know, assuming that the extensions are still in place and that has been provided as part of the record, that, that system could be built today for that medical office bill, that could just, that could be built today.
That is correct. And, and I should clarify, Attorney Smith, the only change from the approval from the medical building to the system today is we brought the design up to current standards. Um, because that was an older approval, some calculations have changed since that time. So actually, the system is just approved, but it's, it's on the same footprint and the same location.
Same location, same depth.
Correct.
And just for clarification for Commissioner uh, Noonan and for the record, uh, the in, can you just explain the actual information that was provided, uh, that is part of the record? And, and I think you indicated that the test borings that were done, how many were done? And, and that that information for the, the, the depth for each one of those borings has been provided and is part of the record?
Uh, yes, actually, that's in the rebuttal that we submitted, I'm sure they'll have it under um, that's under item two, um, in the, the response to stormwaters management issues, that there was uh, borings done. There was three borings done in the stormwater recharge area, um, just to verify depth to um, refusal in those areas, and the numbers are all on there with the um, elevations of the bottom at refusal.
And the borings that were done, uh, do confirm that there is more than three feet of separation distance as required by the deep guidelines?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So just clarifying, what, what information then did you say was not provided to us?
It was the, um, so you asked if the official boring report was provided to you. Um, I provided in my report the depths, but I did not have, at that time, I did not have the official boring report just from the um, drilling company um, on their letterhead to submit to you. But I did provide those depths in my rebuttal.
Thank you.
And, and Mr. Spath, you, you were actually not, you were present for all that, for the drilling of those borings, correct?
That is correct.
And the information that you provided relative, that is part of the record, is accurate?
That is accurate.
And, and the official report would just be a formal report as opposed to the information that you've, uh, it would contain the same information that you have provided and is part of the record?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think you were gonna go over to Mike, I'm not sure, or?
Uh, before I go on that, I just wanted to address a couple other things, um. We talked about the bedrock, uh, Chairman Wagner, he just asked about that, so, um, and, and, and there was a lot of talk of blasting, um, there is no intended blasting on the site. Our applicant had, um, two different contractors visit the site, um, and say that the, the ledge, or let's say the rock that is onsite is very easyable, uh, easy to be chipped, um, with a hammer. As well as the drilling company that was out on site, which I didn't, uh, let our applicant know until actually, um, I think it was yesterday afternoon, this morning, I think it was this morning, that he made the same comment, and I didn't know that the applicant had two contractors out there. The type of rock that's out there is very easyable to be chipped, we intend, intend to be no blasting done. There is, uh, I, I will say, because we talked about these borings, there is some refusal, um, down at seven feet, um, in one of the building corners. Um, that being said, we do have to go down, I believe it was eight and a half or nine feet to get, to get to where we need to be. So there is a foot, foot and a half in some of the corners of the building that will be hammered out. Um, no intentions of blasting. If it was determined any blasting was done, of course, permits will be pulled in accordance to the regulations, and any reports that need to be done at that time performed. But no blasting is intended on the site. I wanted to point out one other thing, um. We talked about, um, Mr. Green talked about earlier, he showed a picture of some ledge on the site, um, that he took a picture of. If you can call it up, Emeline, I, I can show you where it is, but on our site plan, if you look at our site plan, we actually show those ledge outcroppings of the very tight contour lines that he shows in his picture, they're not located on our site, they're actually offsite. They're up by the conservation area as shown on our site plan, you'll see those tight little ledge outcroppings. Um, so I just wanted to point out that those ledge areas that he showed in his picture, they're not subject to, um, we're not gonna be touching those, because they are offsite. Um, I don't know if you wanna see the picture again, or if you recall what it is. That could be up to you, um, but I, I did wanna point that out. The other thing was after, um, okay, so that's perfect right there, and then we'll show the picture, you see in the, um, corner by the, like, say, the conservation easement, that hatched area, where you have all those really tight jagged, um, contour lines offsite, Emeline, if you can move your cursor, like, straight up the map and over to the right, see your little, to the right, right there. That area right there is actually exposed ledge that we're showing on the contours is existing. Um, that's the picture, actually, if you look at that picture, that's the ledge Mr. Green was showing before, so it's actually offsite. Um, I just wanted to point that out for the commission's knowledge. Thank you, Emeline. One of the other things that I've done, um, is I actually went out and I, I made a very important, um, thing after our last meeting to go and walk the state drainage system and easement that we are draining into. One of the things that I noticed is that the water that comes down underneath this, um, the overpass, it goes into some catch basins at the on-ramp, um, to Merritt Parkway South. Um, and then it goes in underneath that and drains into the detention pond on the state side of the ramp we're, we're gonna be going to. That outfall of that pipe is 100% covered in silt and sand, and water was bubbling out of the ground the day I was there, I found the pipe. So when, when it rains, if that's not cleaned and mitigated and, and taken care of, that could cause some potential flooding issues in that area. Um, the catch basins, I looked at personally under the, um, the overpass, there's one right as you're going under the overpass. That pipe is about 50% clogged with debris as well. One of the things that we will be doing, um, when we talk to DOT, which we have in the past about the drainage and tying into the pond, is we will be offering, the applicant will be offering to clean the existing drainage system, vacuum out the catch, catch basins to make sure they are working adequately to help mitigate any kind of water runoff or ponding that may exist. Another picture, sure, we were talking to that detention base and Mr. Green showed of standing water. Um, that picture was great, because that's what that area is supposed to do, that's a detention basin. That is supposed to hold water and get released out slowly into a head wall, to a catch basin, under the highway and over to the river. So I'm glad he provided that picture, it actually showed what, that the basin's working properly in that area. But just so the commission is aware as well, where I'm talking about all this plug taping is, it's not where we're tying in our stormwater retention. It's coming in up farther up the on-ramp into an existing end wall, which is free and clear. So some of the flooding, I'm not gonna say all of it, may have to do with lack of maintenance on the existing drainage system. Um, so that could be taken care of in the future. As far as the other comments on, um, Mr. Trinkus' reports, I've answered them all, I don't wanna take any more of the commission's time, because I know, uh, Attorney Smith wants to move on, but we've addressed, we've answered them all, um, a lot of his things go back to the reason it doesn't work is because of bedrock. We were proven to bed knocks, bedrock is not there. One of the other things he talks about, he made a comment about, was the Unistorm system that we designed. That system has been in place, has been approved by the town engineer, has been used on multiple sites in Fairfield, that has been approved by his commission. But, uh, a stormwater system is actually the Unistorm, that, that unit is a plug-and-play unit. We could propose any unit brand, it'd be like putting appliance in your kitchen, if you want a Maytag, Whirlpool, Bosch, it's like thinking of a dishwasher, it's, it does the same function, it's just a different brand, different manufacturer, and maybe one has a different study, but ours did have a study done independently. And it's used in town, but if that, if the town engineer so decided to have us change that unit, we could do it, but again, she's already reviewed it and approved it. Unless there's any specific, so I think Attorney Smith had a question, possibly?
Just have a, for the record, Chris Smith, have a, a couple for you, uh, Mr. Smith. Uh, Mr. Smith, uh, just for clarification and for the record, the stormwater system that you've designed as it leaves the site, and it does go into, I keep hearing reference to a state system, is the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation going to review, would they have to approve that?
Absolutely, and it has been reviewed, or I shouldn't say has been reviewed, it's been discussed with the state DOT already.
And the state DOT is the same state department that actually maintains the parkway, the Merritt Parkway?
That is correct.
I, I thought so, the, um, now, there was a, there was a photograph of a, uh, some, what appeared to be a storm event in 2018 that had been submitted into the record, uh, do you have an opinion as to what caused that and what's your basis for it?
And I have no opinion, I, I can ask Mike Petrola, as the engineer, uh, on the rebuttals.
So we'll wait for, wait for Mike on that, and the last question for you, uh, Mr. Smith. Uh, were test borings required, test borings that you've done, were they required during, uh, relative to obtaining the approval for the medical office building?
No, they were not.
And the medical office building was approved in, uh, 2015, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you very much, and I, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, if we could, um, I think the Huntington responses, we're turning it over to Mr. Petrola at this point. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Michael?
Members of the commission, my name is Mike Petrola. With regards to the storm we just mentioned on, uh, September 25, 2018, I, I couldn't find the amount of rain, unfortunately, but I did talk to Laura Pooley, as a matter of fact, and I asked her about the, the flooding, and she, actually, she could not recall, uh, that particular storm. So that's how far I got, I got with that. But my, my guess would be, again, it was poor maintenance of the existing structures, and I'm sure it was a, i- i- it was, it was a heavy storm. And as Jason mentioned, our rebuttal with the letter dated March 6th, I think covers everything that was, uh, brought forth on the meeting and, uh, the discrepancy between what was on the plan and my drainage comp. Unfortunately, I'm gonna say it's a Scrivener's area, error on the drainage report. Unfortunately, we, we revised that at least a half a dozen times. But I did run the numbers from the, uh, what was on the plans itself, and the, uh, and the results were the exact same as what the drainage report says on section eight. So each storm from the one-year to the 100-year storm was, uh, was lessened that goes into the state drainage system. And again, just going back to, uh, going back to, let's see, what the date was here, enforcement minutes on September 1, when we met with all the departments, that, that was, uh, 2020. Laura, Laura Pooley had some, some comments, she had nine comments, and it's my opinion, we covered them all, I have correspondence from her that says so. And, uh, her first, her first comment mentioned that, uh, uh, in the second, the sentence says, "The drainage system has been designed to provide adequate attention to water quality volume and groundwater recharge volume as recommended by the 2004 Connecticut DP Stormwater Quality Man- Management, uh, Quality Manual. Uh, the system as designed is therefore acceptable." A- again, she's reviewed this plan at least three times, unfortunately, um, I had a Scrivener's error in, in the report. But the results, the results stand as what, as, as I stated in the report itself.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Mr. Chair, for the record, Chris Smith, uh, for the, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Smith or, uh, Mr. Petrola, just to refresh your recollection, I, I do recall that there was a, uh, Weather Service report that the data from that storm event was pulled, and, uh, I don't know if Mr. Smith can respond to that, if, perhaps you didn't see that, uh, Mr. Petrola.
I, 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 unfortunately, I missed it.
Maybe we can, I'm just waiting to see if, uh, Mr. Smith is available, maybe he's.
Um, yes, we were pulling the storm data, I did, uh, I apologize, I didn't have a chance, it was a substantial event, and I left that piece of paper at my office, I apologize. Um, but we did pull, it was a substantial storm event, unfortunately, I don't have the data in front of me to say the exact amount of rain.
Okay, but, but again, your, your testimony at this point in time relative to the stormwater system, uh, the lack of maintenance causing the backup of, uh, water on Black Rock Turnpike during storm, heavy storm events, such as that?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, just bear with me for a moment. Since I'm just trying to use our time efficiently, we've been pushed, um, close to your curfew as we have, uh, well, we've been pushed close to your curfew again. I don't know, this is for each. At this point in time, uh, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is, uh, turn the presentation over to Matthew Williams of SLR, formerly Mylone McRae.
Uh, hello, everyone, uh, Mr. Chairman and, uh, commission members, my name is Jason Williams. I'm a principal landscape architect with Mylone and Macrum, and, well, currently now SLR. I have 20 years' experience designing everything from parks to greenways to, uh, transit-oriented development plans. Uh, this team brought me on the project to, uh, identify impacts of this development on, uh, the public interest, and so what I'd like to do is just really look at the meaning of the Merritt Parkway, a little bit of its history, to kind of start at 1,000 feet and give a broader context, and then kind of hone in onto our actual site. So, uh, this project, uh, I think in your eyes is really about history, conservation, and development. As the glaciers receded from Connecticut up to the north, uh, they carved out land, which created our hills and our valleys, right? And as you drive east to west across Connecticut on the Merritt Parkway, you're going up, and then you're coming down, and you're going up, and you're going down. And it's obvious that in these low-lying areas is where our roadways, our highway interchanges were developed, and our development. And, Emeline, if I could share my screen, that would be great.
I don't, are you restricted, or can, do you have access to do that? There you are, okay.
Okay, no, uh, i- if, if I, if I may just quickly, I just had a few questions with regards to, uh, to the, the DOT information that we had submitted, I know Attorney Green did make reference to it. Uh, and, um, in particular, Matt, if you can explain the, you know, the, the Merritt Parkway, a- as the Merritt Parkway Advisory Committee who's on it, what's that function, and the landscape master plan for the Merritt Parkway, Parkway, if you can? Just as a little overview, I know that, uh, the, uh, Parkway Conservancy is a, as we know, through their own testimony, is a nonprofit group that, uh, was created in 2002, and it's part of this advisory committee. But if you could explain what that means, I mean, I think there's some confusion, I know when I first heard of the, the organization, I thought it might be a quasi-governmental group, and then I realized it's really just a nonprofit group that serves on a committee of a number, with a number of other, uh, uh, groups in and of themselves, and some, some governmental groups, some towns, eight towns, and, uh, what their, what their function is, and then, uh, if you can just discuss, or maybe you're gonna discuss the landscape plan later, but if you could just give a little overview and perspective on that, that would be great.
Yeah, so, uh, I was definitely going to get involved with that, so, um, it's okay, Chris, so, yeah, so we're going in history, right, we're going up and down valleys, up and down valleys, very hard to build roads on. So we build US-1, US-1 becomes completely congested with the majority of traffic coming from New York, and so, uh, planners decide that we need a northern park or highway heading west to east. Now, the Parkway design was not only to increase the flow of circular, vehicular circulation, but it also had another very important component. And I, I could just wanna go to the Merritt Parkway Conservancy website really quickly, because in the 30s, what essentially the Merritt Parkway did was it created a way to achieve access for development to the hinterlands of Fairfield County, which sound kind of funny now, but it essentially opened up human access to North Stanford, New Canaan, Willin Weston, Easton Trumbull, and Shelton where, where I live, uh, prior to Route 8. And it essentially created this impetus for real estate development, obviously, um, spreading from these low-lying areas. And so, as time went on, uh, the DOT, who regulates the, the Merritt Parkway, wanted to make sure that there was a level of conservancy that really was based on the original intent of creating this Parkway. And so the DOT created the Merritt Parkway Advisory Committee, which, uh, thank God, uh, for, uh, Commissioner Frankel at that time, it included a bunch of DOT disciplines, um, federal highway administration staff, state police, uh, uh, architects and planners, and the Merritt Parkway Conservancy, which is actually a really, uh, important component for the conservation of the Merritt Parkway. And so if you look at my screen, uh, I wanna talk about the Merritt Parkway view sheds, and mainly the history, right? Because history is not static, you can't take something that was designed as a concept in the 30s and say it's always going to remain that way. Uh, and it's, it's not, it's really not good culturally to do that. We move on and we change, but it's, how do we stay within the guidelines of the original prescription, uh, to allow that? how do we stay within the guidelines of the original prescription to allow that change being developed? So along the Merritt Parkway, we have a lot of buildings that are located, everything from office buildings, hotels, schools and shopping malls, starting from Stanford or even starting from Greenwich. And if we look at Greenwich and you go through idyllic Greenwich, which has a long history of the actual routing around the Rockefeller Estate in Greenwich, it's all zoned residential with very large lots and so you're not going to see a lot in Greenwich. When you get to Stanford, low-lying area, high ridge road, you get a really different kind of scenario, you're starting to see human development. Continuing northbound, when you get to the Route 7 interchange in Norwalk, it opens up and you've got heading north up into Norwalk and Wilton, south down to the coast, Westport and I think Mr. Green did mention the Westport facility, which you can now see. Fairfield Merritt Parkway and our site, again, heading northbound, coming over the ridge and down into this low-lying area.
Jason, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you can just maybe read the top heading on each one of the slides so then the record will, it'll be clear what you're referring to, sorry about that, Jason.
Most definitely, so if we come to our site in Fairfield, at Fairfield Merritt Parkway, exit 44, we all know the Hi-Ho motel and myself growing up in this area, traveling the corridor my whole life, I remember historically my great-grandfather saying, "Oh, once I stayed there," and driving with my mom and her saying, "What an eyesore that is, look at that big sign." Up to now, 2021, where it's kind of an iconic feature. It's a gateway to the north into Easton. And even navigation-wise, when someone says, "Oh, we want to go there," "Oh, what exit is that?" You always hear, "It's the Hi-Ho motel exit," which is really pretty interesting. Fairfield Merritt Parkway exits 46 and 47. We again have the Yale-New Haven Health Center as well as a sacred, proposed Sacred Heart Hockey Arena coming into view just off of the Merritt Parkway. And Trumbull Merritt Parkway exit 48, we've got the Continental Properties Residential Development of 202 unit apartment complexes, which are very, very visible from the Merritt Parkway. And then also obviously the Trumbull Mall or Westfield Shopping Mall, which you can see for quite a ways as you're driving northbound just off to your right. The Trumbull Merritt Parkway and Route 8 interchange, we've got the Marriott, which you can see. But also on the right-hand side here, the 130-unit Avalon Apartment Complex in Stratford, which we call Avalon Stratford, it's very visible from the Merritt Parkway. And what is interesting is it's been built now for a couple of years and again, just like Hi-Ho, is starting to work its way as a navigation element into the framework of the Merritt Parkway. Moving to really the end of Fairfield County, the Stratford Merritt Parkway, exit 53. Heading southbound, this is the gateway of the Merritt Parkway. Now, if anybody has driven this at night, obviously it opens up because we have the Houssatonic, very similar to our site, but instead of a river, it's Route 58. Now, as you're heading southbound on 15, your gateway to the Merritt Parkway is a giant manufacturing facility down on the right and an entire hillside of development and lights. That's the beautiful gateway into the Merritt Parkway. And so my point is that development is not necessarily bad for the Merritt Parkway. So one of the things that we wanted to do is take a really biased kind of analysis of the Merritt Parkway, starting from the landscape master plan. Now, in 1994, Mylon and MacBroom developed a landscape master plan for the DOT and Vince McDermott, who was at that time one of the principals of Mylon and MacBroom, was the program manager for this project. And so prior to my analysis, I consulted with Vince and we went through to really understand this area and identify if there were impactful views to the public.
Excuse me, Jason, Jason, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I think we'll probably go 10 or 15 minutes past 10 and either hopefully, hopefully we can do that or we may have to come back.
Yeah, we'll have to come back, the curfew's at 10 o'clock. I'm really sorry, but, you know, if you can wrap it up in the next 10 minutes, great. But if not, no issues, just continuing it for you if you like.
I can wrap it up.
No, wait, wait, Jason, if we can just hold on one sec. It's, I think we're going to have a little, we have a few other things that we have to address and I'm just checking, checking with my client, Mr. Chairman, but
No, no worries.
You know, I know we, I'm sorry?
Take your time.
Okay, thank you. I would anticipate between questions and some of the things that we have to do, it might, it might go a little bit. Yeah, I think, I think we should probably stop now, Mr. Chairman, and just kind of keep it concise for you when we return. And if we come back, we should be able to finish everything, I would think, half hour, possibly 40 minutes, the longest. But again, we did get a late start. But we do appreciate the commission's indulgence in trying to accommodate us tonight.
No issues, and if you're, I'm getting, you would prefer that he stopped now and we'll pick up the end session?
I do, I think to keep it, you know, coordinated and have a concise presentation for the commission, it would be best for us to come back and continue it. This would seem to be a natural cutoff point, we're going from one portion of this presentation to another.
Okay, understood, understood. So, and that's entirely, you know, that's fine with us.
We appreciate that. And then if we could start at the next meeting, Mr. Chairman, with where we are tonight, then we should be able to wrap it up and then take questions from the commission.
Right, well, you'll be certainly on the public hearing and you should be first up. I don't know what else we have on the agenda, you were the only one on tonight, but you know, I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Thank you very much.
So I'll hold this public hearing open and adjourn the meeting. Good night, everyone.